Why don't we kick this thing off? Good evening, everybody. We encourage everybody to turn their cellphones down, off, whatever you want, especially people on the board. And I turned mine off before I entered. Shall we please rise for the invocation and pledge? And Ann this evening is going to have our invocation for it.
Father God, thank you for the day. Thank you for the rain. Please keep us safe as we travel in it. Give us your wisdom and your strength and your guidance as we represent the people of Paradise here tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Kevin.
Smooth pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. George Ann? Here.
Director Ann White? Here.
Here.
I am here.
Thank you all for being here. Number two, approval of consent calendar. The policy that I prefer, each organization does it differently, but even if you have a question about something, instead of taking it off to briefly discuss it, we can just talk about it and then leave it here and still work it through. If you ever anticipate having something that's long enough or there are going to be significant changes in it, then of course I'm not adverse to pulling it off the agenda. Okay, with that, any questions on it?
The chlorine analyzer replacement.
Uh huh.
I know we've gone to the same supplier that we have before, the same type of machinery. Did we actually look into any newer developments from other suppliers, innovations, or anything that's taken place in that part of our business? Yes.
This is the latest innovation from Hawk.
From him, but is there other firms that have had innovations too?
I can shed some light on that. I did a little research on it. And Hawk seems to be the best choice out there. And in addition to that, it mimics what we already have on site rather than going to something that's different that they would have to learn and handle and have additional spare parts for.
No, I understood all of that.
Makes sense in the reviews that I did. I spent about two hours reading reviews from about five different sources, including that use of that monitor in other countries. And the general consensus was that's the one to have.
Thanks very much.
Good question, Bill. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about anything on it? If not, then seeing nobody from the public, careful for somebody make a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Good, we've got two seconds. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Public participation. You all that are here have read it, and so I don't need to read it to you, so. Ready for you.
I'll start. Good evening, Board, Mr. President and staff. Let me cover three things that are fairly recent, and just to touch base on something that comes up almost every month. As much as you know, you enjoy your printed media, and there's a whole lot of other stuff coming around. The March 11 edition of the ER on the editorial page covered the water savings issue that's been reduced to smugness in some people's opinion. So let me just read some of the highlights that were in this. Chicoans, puff your chest here, saved at a 28.4 percent rate. Now, this was based on the previous quarter. Compare that to the nasty old South Coast, which actually used 3.8 percent more. How dare they, the editorial says. Later on, it says, "It appears the closer you get to the lake," meaning Orville, "the more water you save." As in California Water Service's Orville customers saved 40.8 percent. Cow Water Orville. I wonder who's down there. "Don't get us wrong," it says. "Saving at 28.4 percent, Chico's pretty darn good and way better than using more than before the drought like the Southland has done. But before the smugness settles back in, remember Orville still kicked Chico's tail." You know, they could have mentioned Paradise. Because we're nowhere near 40 percent savings, are we?
That just means that Sarah's input was not sought.
Yeah, okay. So, next thing, let me just pass this down. You've probably seen this, but let me start this here and pass this down. I am on the Board of the Butte County Fire Safe Council, and today was one of the days that they sponsored a field trip through a forest health tour. You've probably heard about this. Tom was there as well, several people were. This is one of several that they have done. At the conclusion, while they were having a discussion period, there were several people there, the U.S. Forest Service, BLM, PID, Greg was there, of course, and several people from Fire Safe Council. The emphasis, though, is not only on how we're doing in the way of fire prevention on the property that surrounds the watershed of PID, but also how we're protecting the watershed of PID. And one of the comments that came up was, is whether or not anybody from here, the governors of PID, have actually seen that project and how that works and what's actually happening to protect the watershed of PID. Now, I know there's been communications between Callie Jane and Kevin about the work that goes on there, but specifically for the five that govern this organization, it was asked whether or not anybody has been there. And I said, "Well, I don't know, and I go to most of these meetings," and probably none of you have. But the thing of it was is that they wanted to emphasize, since you're the decision makers, that at some point, for one of these workshops, they would probably create one just for you to get informed, as well as the public and the rest of the people that are involved in this are. So I pointed to Callie Jane and said, "This would be a great thing for you to do." And Greg Dobbs pointed at me and said, "You're always there, you do it." So I've just done it. You've been invited. Let's not forget. But you know, every once in a while, we find there's some districts that are doing just a little bit extra to convince people, "You gotta not forget to save water." So a friend of mine in Chico collected this from a kid who got it from their school. They're in the Cow Water Chico, and it's a little, simple rubber wristband, and it's got just a very specific message in it. So I thought I would share that with you as well. Not that you have to wear it or anything, because you're PID people and you don't want to wear a Cow Water thing, but I thought I'd share it with you, just because they are continuing their message there about water conservation. Thank you for your time.
Please don't sit down. Thank you. I'd like to highlight you briefly. I don't know if you all saw in the paper that Ward Habril has been named, is it senior or man of the year?
Man.
Man, okay, thank you. I knew that you were older, so I wasn't sure which it was. Anyway, Ward Habril has been named man of the year by the Elks this year, and his christening ceremony is at the Elks Lodge Saturday evening, April the 7th, at 5:00. Doors open. So congratulations to you, sir. We know that you are very active in the community, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, President.
Congratulations, Lord.
Mr. Kelly.
My name's Tom Kelly. I've been living, resident of Paradise for over 50 years. Came up here to help build Orville Dam, and so I know a bit about it. But the reason I want to make a couple of points tonight was I'm on the Board of the Fire Safe Council, and the Paradise Ridge Fire Safe Council. I've served on every Board and outfit and volunteer organization that we had. But we're facing a problem up here with PG&E, and PG&E is trying to divest themselves, as you know, of all the power plants, all the flumes. And the problem is FERC, they filed a motion with FERC, and FERC has turned them down because they, there's water rights that are going back, as I found out. I researched all the water rights and all the flumes in this area. I worked with, I told Neil I was going to do this about three weeks ago, and I managed to map all the flumes in the Paradise, on the Paradise Ridge, and find the major water rights on the Paradise Ridge, going back to 1854. So it's not a thing that, it's easy to resolve. In fact, if you open up a lake to it on, from FERC and Butte County on PG&E, it's just pages and pages and pages and pages of all this stuff. Fascinating what they're doing, but it does concern us and our watershed. And today, Ward and I and the forestry, we went up to take a look at one of our Paradise projects. We have spent, the Butte County Fire Safe Council has spent over $1 million in the last two years up on Round Paradise Lake and working with forestry. And we're tying projects, not only on your land, but we're tying all the projects together. We were made partners of SPI, PG&E. The big players up there are, I've even contacted Meadow Brook Farm. I've got, I talked to Mr. Van De Grift the other day about his water rights. And we're tying all these units together, and being able to do that, we also bring in the forestry. And it's not a little project. It started with a little project around the lake, and now it's a big project going on the whole ridge, all the way down, all the way down around Paradise Pines and up, and all the way up to Nimshoe. So that was $2 million in the last two years. Now, if you want to go back, we spent $6 million in the last 20 years, all on this area here. And the idea is to sustain, one of the things is, first, I'm looking at, I'm on the Fire Safe Council also, prevent fires on the ridge. But the other thing is build a healthy forest, sustain the forest. And that is something that you really have to go see. You know, it's just marvelous. You go up there, if you went up there about two years ago, you couldn't even see your way through the woods, and now you can see a half a mile through the woods. And so that's all I have to say. I'll sit down. But I do have the, I do have all the flumes mapped, and it's kind of interesting, because I found that all this information is at the Paradise Library or at the Golden Nugget Museum, and nobody mapped it. And we've got it mapped. Thank you.
If I could ask you, were you involved in the forest management plan that we all received?
No, I haven't. I'm not involved with, because the forest management plan, all these plans, like they mentioned today, the head forester was up there, and these two fellows are from the Plymouth National Forest. I said, "Well, you got a 15-year plan." He says, "My God, I have a 15-minute plan." I've never, you know, I've been working in construction and everything, and fixed-price contracts and strict deadlines, and you know, you do it now, in three, four months, not this five-year, 10-year, 15-years. It's nonsense. It's just a waste of time.
Thank you.
Would you make avail, would you consider making available the work that you've done to the Board?
I'm sorry?
Would you consider making available the maps and such, the work that you've done to the Board?
Oh, all my maps are free of charge. I'm sharing with everybody. That's one thing I can pay back to the community, because this has been a nice place to live. And so I have hundreds of maps. And the issues about the dam is coming up, you know, the spillways and all that, nonsense. I mean, there's a lot of nonsense that comes up. I mapped the Maasling Fault and all the ground, all that, the soils analysis up there. It hasn't changed since, when it was Jurassic Age. Nothing's happened. If it's going to happen, well, whoopee, once in every couple of million years, it doesn't matter.
But I think that what she asked is, would you be able to make available your work on the, on the water, the mapping of the water rights and the canals and so on? Is that something that can be put into something succinct, or do we have to have 50 pages of it?
Can we ask Neil, did he disclose something that we aren't already aware of, or do we already have this information?
Sounds like he got it out of history books.
Big maps.
Big maps.
And so I put them on a map, and so it makes it easier, so I put, instead of one in 25,000 steel, I run usually about four inches to the mile on the maps. So you'll have a big map of the watershed, and you can see where everything goes.
Tell you what, I'll work with him and see if we can get something.
I'll get you what you want.
At the next Lake Committee meeting, I was going to ask that Tom be put on the committee. And he can share his maps with us and other information at the Lake Committee and so forth, and that would give us access to it. And I know he's been talking to Neil. Tom's a good friend of mine, has been for many years, and he loves making maps, to the point, he's driven part of his family. It's a sort of a family joke about his maps. But he has done a lot, and he's done it on the fault underneath the Megalia Reservoir.
I have the maps of the mines up here, from 1870, all this, you know, and I've collected thousands of maps. But the main reason why I did it, number one, why I'm on the Fire State Council, I was working for the grand jury for about two years, mapping the actual fire roads up here, where we have fire access, where we can get in, where we can't get in. And we're working with CalFire, I work with CalFire, and we provide them maps. And it tied in with, the same thing, we tied in with SPI. I was down there yesterday, working in the afternoon with Steve and K O Leary, the managers. They're mapping Ponderosa Way through the area, and I have a full map of Ponderosa Way, 960 miles. My map is 45 feet long, and I've driven about 90 percent of this. I've been out there. I mean, it's not just talking about it like the forestry does. I've been there, and so you can make it, I make it available so that you can have it. And if you can use it, fine. If you can't use it, well, no waste of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doesn't cost you anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What word do you want to leave committee, Tom?
And for those that maybe don't know, Mr. Kelly also has been a huge volunteer in town, and if any of you have driven the road, the Dome Mill Road, over to, goes down to the creek and back up the other side, that new bridge, the people of the community can thank almost solely to Tom Kelly. Because the old, yeah, the old bridge was so scary. Every time I go across it, I'd say a prayer on each side, you know. But the new one is fabulous. Thank you.
That's the 77th Bridge. And Westy Flatt Bridge was up at the same time.
Right.
And it's the 39th Bridge, or dealing with the government.
Yeah.
Excepted about another four years, I probably answered the first letter I sent.
Government turns slowly. Anybody else from the public wish to speak?
I don't have much. I'm still on the receiving end, folks. Good evening, Board. This is only my third meeting, and I must tell you, I'm learning a lot. I find this very interesting. Water is everybody's business. And I really can't hold a candle to what these last few guys were talking about here. But as a ratepayer, I can say this, that we're all interested in saving money, and I don't have the background that you folks have, because I wasn't here when you discussed about RESB and your plans for it. But it sounds like an awful lot of money, and I know Kevin says that our balance sheet is growing, and I see that we are, money's coming in a little faster. And I just hope that the Board had thoroughly investigated the chance of maybe putting a Band-Aid on that RESB until we can save the money for it, because I know I have to save money for it. And when you only have 10,000 ratepayers, I can do the math pretty darn quick, and I can tell you what my part is. And then also, you brought up that, what happens if the state of California says that our dams are dangerous, and we have to make a huge investment? Again, we're going to all be on the tab for it. I mean, I don't mind paying my share, but I know you'd have a hard time getting everybody to cough up for it. And which brings me to another point. I'd like the Board, maybe I'll sit down, talk about how we're talking about buying this PG&E property. I've hiked up here, and all that stuff is crumbling. You're going to inherit some old stuff. So I just hope you know how we would pay to maintain that property. And on that, I appreciate what you guys have done, and thank you very much.
For the benefit of the camera, et cetera, what was your name, sir?
Red Hofer.
Hofer. Thank you.
Red, he's the newest member of the Ad-Hoc Garden Committee.
Ah, that's where I saw that. Okay, number four, presentation. Kevin, you want to introduce this?
Jen Chavez is here. She is our renter at the, it used to be an old flower shop up there. And when we purchased this property, the property up there, we purchased four parcels. We then merged one parcel into another, so we had three parcels, which we currently own, still three parcels. The original idea was actually to build a brand-new corporate, or administration building on those two parcels up there. And then this building came available, and then that's when we purchased this building. We've held on to those two parcels and used them as rentals. And the flower shop, the old flower shop, was actually vacant for many, many, well, many months, and then we had an attorney go into there, and then he moved out of there, and then it was vacant again for many months. And then we were approached by Jen to come in and to take over the rental of it. And so what I wanted to do was kind of introduce you to her, what she's doing up there, the benefits that it offers to the community. And so that's where I asked her to maybe do this as our Board Education for this month, is to actually get educated on what our renter is doing up at one of our rental shops. So at that point, I'll introduce Jen.
Okay. My name is Jen Chavez, and I am the owner of the Red Wagon in Paradise. And I don't know if any, I was here last year speaking, so I recognize a few of your faces, and I really appreciate you having me here tonight. This is my daughter Glory, and this is my youngest daughter Gigi. And I have a son who's at home. He's sick, so he couldn't be here. His name's Gavin, they all start with G's. Not that that has anything to do with tonight, but anyhow, I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate that building that I'm in, and I'm not just an ordinary business in there. There's a lot that goes on in that building that benefits the community of Paradise. I'm here tonight in hopes to renew my lease long-term. I love being in the building, and it's a great space for me and for what I'm doing in there. I started renting it back in 2016, in January 2016, so I've been there a little over two years. I'm a good renter. I keep the place really clean. I pay my rent on time. I take excellent care of the building. So just to give you a little brief information about where the Red Wagon started, it started, if you don't know, at my kitchen table about four years ago. My kids started bringing their friends in, and they all wanted to learn how to sew. And so I started having all these kids in my house, and it was cars pulling in and out of the driveway all the time, and then people would stay for dinner, and it was just, so my husband finally convinced me that I needed to resign from my position at the hospital that I'd been in for 21 years as a respiratory therapist. So I gave that up to pursue my dream of owning a business and making a difference in the community with the job that I do. I love working at the hospital, but this was just a different path in my life that I decided to go down. And so before I came to the building that I'm in now, I rented a small, little 200-square-foot building, which is pretty, pretty small, small space, but that's where I started. That was my humble beginnings. From my kitchen table, I moved to that, and now I'm in the building up the road. So I'm in heaven up there. It's a much nicer space, I have a lot more room to accommodate more people. So I really appreciate being up there. Since I started renting the space from you folks from Paradise Irrigation, I've had over 1,000 students come through my doors. As a mother of three children, I can tell you, if you have kids or grandkids, or you know people that have children, there isn't a whole lot to do for the children that are on the ridge. And it's nice to have resources in town that kids can, you know, fun things that they can do, things that are going to build up their self-esteem, and just a place where they can go and learn and be creative and enjoy and grow and just keep our kids thriving. So that's one of my primary goals in my business, is to keep the community thriving and keep the kids thriving and so forth. So I've been established now for about four years. Let's see, hopefully I can get this thing to go in the right direction. This is where I first started, at my kitchen table. There's some kids in there sewing. I started with a few, and then, like I said, I had dozens of kids coming through my home. That's my son at the kitchen table. He also likes to sew. This was the very first building I rented in Paradise. It's on Clark Road. This was my little 200-square-foot place. It was crammed. I was only in there for about six months, and the business grew so quickly that I outgrew the space. And so it was a little bit of a scary and a big step for me to venture out, because I've never done this before. So I'm just kind of winging it and, you know, making decisions as I go, but it's all fallen into place. This is an article, "I Actually Started Sewing and Selling Things Out of My Home When My Kids Were Babies," and that's kind of how I led into what I'm doing today. So that's a really old article. So what do we do at the Red Wagon? We started out with sewing. Now we do sewing classes, we do painting classes, quilting, crocheting, knitting, cookie decorating. I host several school field trips. A lot of the schools in Paradise, in Chico, Megalia, and Orville have come through the Red Wagon. I have summer camps, and we also host a lot of different events, birthday parties and baby showers, because the space is such a nice space. I like to share the space with the town. So here's just a few pictures of some of the classes I've done. This is a group of kids sewing, and there's some kids on there painting. Hopefully you guys can see the pictures, okay? So I have kids that come in, all ages, and I work with adults, too, but I'm just showing you, these are some of the kids from Paradise High School. They have a private after-school group. They come in and sew with me, boys and girls, which is great. You can see there's all different ages. This little girl on the, let's see, did I hit the right button? This little girl right here, this is a cool story. She and her mom came here over the summer from the British Virgin Islands, and I don't know if you guys remember the storms that they embraced. They lost their home, and this little girl lost her father in the storm, and so they came to Paradise to stay with some friends and just kind of get away, and their home was pretty much torn down to almost nothing, and so they just wanted to get out of there and have a change of scenery. And so I was able to have this little girl the whole summer, and now she's gone back to her home and they're rebuilding. But it was really neat to have that. And I have hundreds of stories like that. If you ever are curious, or you ever want to come and talk to me, I always have an open door. I'd love to tell you, I've got several hundreds of stories that are, that will really impress upon your heart. That one was one of my favorite, favorites. Here's some more of the kids sewing. The girls on the right, they made skirts, and then they made matching skirts for their dolls. So that was kind of a fun thing that we did over in the summer. Let's see, I have also hosted cookie decorating classes. You see some adults in here, lots of adults, painting. We do a wine night where people can have a glass of wine and paint and come in and relax and just enjoy some adult time. We do all kinds of things for Mother's Day and Father's Day. You name it, we do it. Anything that's art-related. I'm pretty excited now. We've also added in, I have a piano teacher that comes in. I have a piano at the Red Wagon. My dream was to incorporate art and music and have that all together. So it started with sewing, and now it's all these other things with art, and also I have a piano teacher. She happens to be a Paradise resident that's lived here for over 30 years, a well-known Paradise resident. Her husband just passed away last year, so she is really excited that she gets to have a purpose, and she gets to work with kids and teaches people her passion. So she has 12 students now at the Red Wagon, and she comes twice a week, and she has a great following, and my children included. She's a wonderful teacher. So it's not just me, I have a few others that are also teaching. Those are some of the birthday parties that we've done. Let's see, did we go to the next slide?
Here.
Oops, I think I'm pointing in the wrong direction. This is one of my favorite sayings, "A goal without a plan is just a wish." So my primary goal is, I don't want to just be a run-of-the-mill business. I pour my heart and soul into every single person that comes into the Red Wagon. I work with people from birth all the way to 100 years old, and I love every single person that I work with. And I try to treat everybody with all the love that I have in my heart, which is a ton, and I hope that they walk away feeling better when they leave the Red Wagon. I am a huge community outreach person. This is number one for me in my business, is community outreach. I work with a lot of different organizations in the town of Paradise. I do a lot of donations. These kids were from the Boys and Girls Club, and they don't pay for their classes. It's all donated, the supplies are donated. I volunteer my time once a week. They haven't been coming lately, but they came all last year, and they were able to come and do some art. A lot of the kids in Paradise, the families are not able to pay for classes, so I try to give everybody a fair chance to come and take a class if they're in that situation. There's some Girl Scouts that I've worked with. Home economics, I decided, I had this idea one day, that my kids, I'm homeschooling them now, but they've been in the public school system their whole schooled life, and I would work in the classrooms, and when I was in the schools, I realized that the kids weren't learning how to hand-sew, and there were just a lot of, you know, with the budget cuts, they don't have home economics in the classrooms anymore. Well, in my opinion, they need to have these life skills. So I started going into the classrooms and teaching the kids how to hand-sew, how to thread a needle, how to sew on a button, just, you know, basic life skills that they don't know how to do. So these kids made those cute little owls up there, and this is just another class that I was in. I've been in all the schools in Paradise and Megalia. They also come to me, these are just some cute little cards they made, they sewed some little owls out of felt, and so they were so excited over it, they wrote me these really nice thank you cards, and it was just, they were so cute, because they drew what their owl looked like, so that was pretty neat. owl looked like, so that was pretty neat. Here's some more school field trips. The middle picture is a classroom from Ponderosa Elementary and they actually made it a full-day field trip, so they walked, if you know where Ponderosa is, it's on Pence Road. They walked from Ponderosa and they all packed their lunches and everything and they came and we sewed and we had just a super fun day and at the end of the day, they had lunch and snacks and we sat outside and it was just, it was a really fun time. So there's not a lot of places for field trips in Paradise for our kids. So that was a fun, that was a fun one. This is a summer camp that I do, you guys might recognize the back of the roof there on PID, PID property. So I'm hoping one day to improve that, make it a little bit nicer out there for the kids, but they love it, they're happy with it just the way it is. So we do, we like to do some outside things too. I have, I do a lot of donations, you can see, that's just a few of the things that I donate to financially in the form of gift certificates or also my time. My number one, the number one thing that I volunteer, that I like to do with volunteer is, with donations, excuse me, is I like to bring in kids and I also have a couple of senior citizens that come in to Red Wagon. Maybe they've lost a spouse or they don't have family in town, they just want to get out of the house, they need somewhere to go, they want to be around somebody that's loving and positive and they need a happy environment, so they come in and they say, "What can I do for you Jen?" And I say, "Can you help me cut these patterns out because I've got to cut out 50 owls today to take into the schools." So anyhow, so I have a volunteer program and the kids, if they're 12-years-old and older, they come in, you can see the girls on the left up here, they are two of my volunteers. They're homeschooled kids and they are learning how to run a business. And they, I take them into the schools with me, I know they're really cute. That's our suitcase we bring with all of our supplies when we go out to the schools. But they, so they come and they learn how to work with others, they learn how to work in a classroom setting with a teacher, with other students, so they're learning a lot. Also, some of my volunteers that come in do not have the means to pay for my classes, although I keep my costs very low because I want everybody to have a chance. But there are some children, there's a lot of children in Paradise, their families aren't able to pay for their classes. So what I do is, and especially these girls, they have, they come from big families that have lots of, one has five kids and the other one has four. And so it's not that the parents can't afford it necessarily, but they have all these other kids doing all these things. So the kids, what they do is they come in, they volunteer two hours a week and then at the end of the month, they earn a free class. So the girls on your left, they've taken lots of classes and their parents have not had to pay for any of the classes, which is a huge blessing to the kids and to the parents because the kids, they're kind of earning their keep, so to speak. So the girls on the right are my girls and that was us doing a field trip just a few weeks ago in town. So in the summer and also throughout the year, I have, I don't know if you're familiar with the Paradise High School, they have a, they have senior projects that the seniors have to do throughout, like they have to spend a whole semester working on some kind of an important project that benefits the community. So I've had some of those students come through and work with me. And then I also have a summer mentorship for students who are off in the summer, they don't have anything to do, they want to come and learn how to run a business, maybe they want to volunteer, maybe they want to help, maybe they just want to observe, maybe they want to write a paper for school. So I have a lot of different people coming in for different reasons, other than just for sewing. This group of girls, they, we decided this winter that we were going to make blankets for the homeless population in Paradise. We are still working on them, it's quite a process to make blankets, it's a lot of work. If you look closely, you can see there's lots of different colors in there. They had to go through scraps and we had to measure and cut and so we're about halfway done with those, but our goal is hopefully before it gets too warm, we can get these blankets passed out to people in Paradise that don't have a place to live. This is the most rewarding part of why I do what I do and this is why I love it so much. I have a book at Red Wagon, it's my scrapbook, people come in. Everybody that's taken a class or anybody that's come through there that would like to can write down a memory that they have made with me or something that stood out or something that was special to them. And so my favorite one at the top is, "Thank you for believing in me," was one of my students wrote that. So I have a lot of kids that come from hard situations and when they leave, they just, my goal is that they walk out knowing that they're better than they were when they came in. So anyways, that's our scrapbook, that's kind of a cool thing. I serve over 75 local homeschool students, I don't know if you're familiar with the homeschools, there's a lot of children in Paradise in Bute County that are in homeschool programs. So this is just a few of the schools that I'm a vendor for, you have to go through a fingerprinting process and it's quite the ordeal to become a vendor. So I have a lot of kids that come through during the day as well. I work with every kind of disability that you could possibly imagine, I've had kids in wheelchairs and I've had, I have had children with cerebral palsy, I've had adults with special needs, you name it, I do it. If I can accommodate anybody, I will, no matter what their age or their needs are. This is one of my favorites, last summer, there's a retirement home locally that asked me to come and paint with the senior citizens. So I did and so I brought the service to them because obviously they can't get out. But this sweet lady here, she was, it was her 100th birthday that night, so it's something I'll never forget because she was so happy that she got to paint that tree and I taught her how to do it, so it was really neat. So anyhow, so I work with older people as well and I love them just as much. This is the best part, so this is the building when I got it initially, on the left, the picture's a little dark. I tried to spruce up the front a little bit and had the window painted, so the before's on the left and then the after's on the right, which I haven't done a whole lot to the outside, but that's in my, that's in the plan. My family lives in Paradise, my husband works for the fire department, we've been here for 25 years and we're a well-established business, family and my children and my husband and all of us do this together. So when my husband's not working, he's here helping me. So you can see my son, he's 12, he was, he painted all the walls, I don't know if you saw in there, it was yellow and orange and some really interesting colors and it had green carpet. So we replaced all of that, my son now knows how to replace flooring, which is pretty cool. And there's my husband, he replaced all the flooring with hardwood flooring. If you haven't come in, I encourage you to come by, it looks beautiful. So the before's on the left and then the after's on the right, it made a big difference. This is my sewing room and this picture here, it's a little hard to tell, but it had some really old linoleum that was cracked and peeling and dirty and it was in bad shape and so this is the sewing room now, you can see we did the hardwood floors in there, there's all my sewing machines. So we've improved that room quite a bit. So the building is 30-years-old approximately, I believe. We've redone all of the inside of it. It's beautiful inside now, I don't know if you guys know, it did sit vacant for about three years or so. When we got it, it was full of cobwebs and it was really dirty and, but we didn't care because we were so excited to go from 200 square feet to that, that we just rolled up our sleeves and my family, my kids and I, my husband, we got in there and we cleaned like crazy and we painted and we pulled carpet out and we did a lot of work to the inside of it. So we are just hoping that you will allow us to stay in that building at the current rent rate that we have, so that I can continue to provide services to the community. My intention and my hope is that we can have the outside of the building painted, I'm more than willing to personally go out there and do the work. I don't mind, my family will help me do it, they've already committed and agreed to that if you guys would be willing to let us do that. We would love to do that, we just want to keep improving it. We feel like we're nice, we're next to such a nice building, the PID building's so beautiful and then ours is kind of, needs a paint job, needs a little facelift. And we would love to do that if we know that we will get to stay, we hope that we get to stay for many years. If it ever does go for sale, of course, we would be more than, we would love to be able to purchase it, but in the meantime, we would love to just sign a lease and know that we get to stay there and we can deck that place out and make it even better than it already is. So I appreciate your support and does anybody have any questions? Thanks for listening to me. I hope I didn't take up too much time.
I just love what I do.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing and your huge contribution to this community.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My girls are going to hand you guys one of my brochures so you can see some of the pictures. I always make them more...
I have a question for your daughters, did you guys sew those aprons yourself? Oh, okay, well.
They know how to.
Oh, there you go.
They know how to.
Oh, thank you.
If you have a question, sir?
Thank you. I'm the longest-serving board member, so I remember when you came before. And we're very pleased that it's worked out as well as it has.
Thank you.
There's been no thought about raising your rent that I know of. Certainly I'm sure the district can find extra dollars to paint the outside of the building or whatever and so we really appreciate what you're doing for the community.
Thank you.
We really want to continue our support.
Thank you.
At least I, for sure it is, and it sounds like the rest of us do too.
I echo those sentiments as well.
I appreciate that.
I'll go one step farther, I'll paint it if you and your husband can mask it.
You got it. Really?
Guarantee it.
It's a deal.
Yeah, you just get in touch.
You're awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I got all the masking stuff, I'll provide everything.
Thank you, that is such a blessing.
The easy part is painting it, the hard part is masking.
The preparation is the hard part.
It's the prep, it's the hard part.
We're willing to do it, we're more than happy to, so thank you.
I do lots of home...
I just had one last question, Jen, do you have any outreach to boys? It looks like most of your clients are...
No, they were girls, they were boys in there.
Were there boys in the classes?
Oh yes, there are lots of boys, lots of boys. What I, I have to get creative with the boys because there's kind of this stigma that sewing is for girls, but I bring in things like Star Wars and Minecraft and Pokemon, you know, all of the things that the kids, the boy, the 12, 13, 14-year-old boys like. So I get them in and then once I get them in, they realize that a sewing machine is just a piece of machinery. I mean, just because you're using fabric doesn't mean it's for girls, so they end up loving it and they end up coming back, so.
I'm surprised you don't start taking it apart.
I've had a few asked to do that, but I haven't let them.
Have you heard about Dress a Girl, that thing in town that's offered in some of the churches?
Yes, I have.
You've heard of it?
I've heard of that. I actually go to CMA at the church and they do that at the church and I just have not had time to participate in that, but that is on my list.
But the only reason I mention that is because there are a bunch of men that help with that.
Oh, okay.
Quite a few men. In fact, have you helped with that, Ward? Yeah, I thought so.
Awesome.
Yeah, there are a bunch of guys that help with that, it's neat.
That's wonderful.
It's a huge program.
I know. I love all that stuff.
I just love going in there and watching them all work, then I leave.
Yes.
But my parents taught me, I'm one of the old-fashioned guys, I can sew, cook, launder, you know, laundry, clean house, everything.
You're a keeper.
When is your lease renewed?
My lease, I only signed a one-year lease and so I, it's been, I've been there for two years, so we just haven't...
It's just a month-a-month.
It's a month-a-month.
Uh-huh, it's a month-a-month.
What I wanted to do is kind of get, let her know, we're going to bring forward, I'll work with her and maybe get any...
I was just going to ask, we're going to bring that forward for an action item and...
So we'll get, I'll work with her to get on a lease that she's looking for.
Comfortable with, yeah.
Bring that forward to the board to see if you guys are...
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's neat.
Thank you, Jen.
Well, if you all will indulge me a brief moment, I got a couple of items that I'd like to mention. First of all, of course, since the last meeting, we're all aware of Bill Kellogg's wife passing and we're very sad about that, sir, our hearts are with you. And there was a memorial service this last weekend, I'm not sure if any of you were able to attend, but it was absolutely huge. That Elks Lodge was packed, 400, 500 people, I'm not sure, anyway, it was absolutely packed.
It was 230, we don't know because we ran out of programs. We printed 200 and they just kept going.
Well, and we were, and everybody was having to share them, so there, I think that there were at least four is my guess.
Okay, well, the wife was really well-known in the community, although she just worked as a receptionist for my doctor for over 35 years. She was active in all sorts of things and helping people and one of the things we had there was a little card saying, "Pay it forward," anything that, if you know that one, and then on the other side it had her name. So this is what made it such a big thing and my family all contributed, they didn't let me do much of anything except stand at the door and greet people and wouldn't let me speak and it's just as well, I wouldn't have gotten through the talk. I really appreciate the support of the community and everything from my wife, both doctors she worked for talked about it. It was really a nice ceremony. There was one employee, Keith came through, he had to run off to a baby shop, but he was there for a few minutes, so.
To say that your wife was just a receptionist is like saying President Lincoln was just a president, you know, he was exceptional, your wife was very special. The love, the outpouring of love for her at that function was amazing, so a lot of people loved her.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Also, I don't know how many of you knew, but one of the best reporters we've had at The Post in a long time is going to be departing us shortly too and we're very sad about that. You're one, I think you're the only reporter ever that I can remember that has actually quoted me correctly and everything, it's just amazing, just amazing. But I think I mentioned to you that I just absolutely loved and for the last 30-plus years of being involved in this town, I would ask every reporter, "Why aren't you recording this?" They would do these little chicken scratchings and that I'd be just totally misquoted and no wonder. So when she's asked, "Can I please record?" When she talks with anybody, that's amazing, you actually want to get it correct and you've done an outstanding job and we will miss you a lot in the community, so. Good luck wherever you're going. Okay, item number five, staff and billing reports.
Did you entertain any questions?
I think I had one.
I had, let's see. On page 26, this is for the treatment, this is Jim's, on the North Lake Boat Launch Grant He said that we're waiting for the Departments of Boat and Waterways' response to our concerns, but that they requested the district to execute a pending grant agreement, Amendment Number Two, extending the project completion date to February 1st, 2019. Were we going to do that?
We did that, yeah.
I thought we did, I thought we did that, but...
It was just a formality, we had legal in it, so we just, we extended the agreement with the adjusted cost with the move.
Okay.
And, but we haven't committed to any of that, until they get back to us on all the issues that we had with... Still no response, huh?
Their legal is working with their senior management to try to accommodate your conditions.
Maybe their legal can talk to our legal?
I don't believe their legal has talked to our legal yet. When we get a written response is...
Yeah. Then they'll talk, okay.
We'll see.
And then the next was on page 31 also for you, Jim, but in passing, the tabletop scenario, I was very impressed with that and the outcome of it and it looked like, yeah, very well-done, very well-thought-out.
Thank you.
Jim did a great job. And I think that was a positive thing, we came out with a lot of positive things that came out of that.
Yeah, I saw the after-action, it looked pretty good.
How many employees participated in that?
Well, all the managers, so eight.
Anyway, on page 31, the $500,000 we're requesting in a grant. And then, did we ever, I know we were trying to recoup that in some way, 1.6 million, but you'll have to refresh my memory, Kevin, I don't remember how, was it going to be a loan, a grant?
It was going to be a loan, so this is, I believe, this is part of that loan, this is for the process water, is that right?
Yes, this is for principal forgiveness.
So that's, so we're asking for design funds for that process water, which we had 1.6 already spent on that, that we're looking for, to recoup through a loan, a low-interest loan, but part of that, we're looking also for principal forgiveness of that loan of $500,000.
So this is, then let me see if I'm clear on this, we're requesting a loan of 1.6 million of which 500,000 we want forgiven?
It's actually more than that, what do we request?
It's 4 million.
4 million on the design portion of the loan.
If it, in my staff report, I talk about this in more detail, in the 500,000. For us to get the existing design monies reimbursed in a long-term loan, we need to do some sort of process water recycle project. undefined at this moment. Let's see how it develops with the NPDS permit renewal. But this original, this $500,000 is an important aspect of forgiveness, of principle. Automatically takes the principal right off the top, 500,000.
Okay.
Which is that. So...
So we're still, we're still going after it because it's no harm to the district at this point because we've already spent...
Right, right. Yeah, we paid cash for that part of it. Yeah.
And get 500,000. That's forgiven. And it's a bonus of 500,000 off the top.
Okay. Yeah, those were all my questions. Thank you.
She's for 4 million off the top.
500 is the cap.
Just kidding.
Any other questions?
I was just going to comment on the field operations and the new employees that passed their driving tests. I thought that was pretty good. But congratulate them that they passed their, is it class A or class B?
Class A.
Yeah, that's a tough test.
I'd like to comment.
Please.
On, um, we're getting so many of the, what was it, 250 replacement meters or not meters, but the...
Fireflies.
Fireflies. And then it mentions, we hired, normally we don't hire three people this time of year because of the rains and everything. But evidently also in the report, it says you needed two to three people to work on the replacements.
We're having them work on replacements. We actually do hire our normal new hires at this time because it gives them the time to train, train them and to get their Class A license up to speed so that when construction season hits, they're right up to speed so that they hit their ground. So this is truly when we do hire most of the time the new hires. But it wasn't just for the replacement of the fireflies.
Okay, we're using more sta, I'm sort of curious about this because of costs. We're going to, we're replacing 250 meters or fireflies at $100 apiece. Then what is the labor cost in that? Because it mentions two to three men may be tied up in it somewhere in this report. I can't find it right now.
I forget what the...
Page 17.
The labor cost was. We had a study on that, but it normally...
It's like $40.
Normally it's a couple, I think 15 minutes per, per replacement. And we're just basically changing them out. So we put, take the old one out, put the new one in, program it right there in the field and...
In the cost of replacing them, are those figures in these charts that were the cost of the labor and the material?
Tracking them through job tickets, but we're not tracking them directly on...
No, separating the time. Yeah. But it is true that it takes about 15, 20 minutes because my wife and I, one, one day, I happened to be home and PID truck pulls up in front of the house. And I thought, what's going on? They shutting me down for not paying my bill or something? Anyway, so I went out and they were replacing it. And they just flipped right along. They were out of there in a few minutes. So...
I think you allocated the half hour, didn't you? Fifteen minutes for the travel time, I think, to a job site, if I remember right.
Yeah.
So it was 30 minutes total.
I was just curious, what, what I get, I'm trying to get at it. Can we have a report which shows what it's costing us per month on these fireflies with the labor, showing what the expense is? Because I don't know, remember anything in the budget. Maybe it was there, but I'd like to see how we're doing against the budget. There's, how many of these fireflies out there that we still have to replace? Because evidently we're...
I think, Bill, we do have that information. Jim, when he did that report, when I was questioning...
Right.
Replacing the batteries, they did a detailed study on the labor involved in changing batteries and changing units.
No, I understand that. What I want to see is a dollar and cent thing on it. It could be a graph for all I care. The, on how much the district is putting out when we do 250. That seems like, what is that? That $100 crack and another...
25,000.
Huh?
25,000.
Okay. But if we could just see that as we're going, I think that would be a good guide for us. Okay. Thank you.
Cliff, do you have any questions? I only had one, brief one. When they flush is, the systems like they're doing now, is there any metering done on that? Do we know how much we're dumping down the rivers and...
Yeah, we do meter how much is coming out of the...
You do approximately meter it?
Right.
I was just curious when I was reading still, because that, the percentage that we're losing is decreasing all the time. And I was wondering how that's handled. Because that's a holacious amount of water that they dump.
We take that into consideration on, we take the water out from flushing or our loss water calculation. Not from the graph that goes before. Just that, that includes flushing. I'd accounted water for the flushing.
Even if you just kind of winged it and if they turn the average one on, it stays on for 15 minutes. You could probably tell approximately what it is. And if you've done 30 locations, you can kind of approximately, because we're technically not losing that. It's not lost water. It's intentionally dumped.
It's intentional loss.
You know, in regards to that, Kevin, do we dechlorinate? What do we use for dechlorination? Sodium thiosulfate or...
Dechlorinate, yes.
Or do we use the citric?
Sodium thiosulfate.
Sodium thiosulfate? Okay. Okay. That's good. All right. Have we looked at the Vitaclore? Have you guys looked at that?
Well, I think they have in the past. They have. They, I don't look correctly involved in this.
Okay.
They're using that. They put the tablets in the tank.
Right.
And then they flush into the tank. So we'll dechlorinate.
Yeah. No, I was, I was curious because I was approached by the Vita-Declore people for the benefits over using that over sodium thiosulfate. And they said that Cal Water was using their product quite a bit. And so I was just curious where we were at.
We used over the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no more questions, anybody from the public wish to address this? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for action.
I make a motion that we accept the billing and staff reports.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Managers' report number six. Kevin?
I have my written report. The Water Rights presentation from last month. I just want to, Robin Huffman was here and had some comments. And she wanted to make sure her comments were known to the board. So that's why you have an email string that went back after the board, after the agenda had been done. So just to let you know that that's what those, that email string is there for. And just a heads up to, she has concerns about the sphere of influence that is associated with the EIR. So just to kind of give, remind the board is that the board back in 2009 hired de novo planning to do an EIR for the renewal of, basically what we, what we decided was we were going to renew the permits going forward, two permits. And, and try to get extensions on those two permits. So that's what that EIR was originally established for. Through the process, we decided that we were going to go to license on that permit 271 because we feel like it was perfected. So that changed through that process. So the EIR has to be reissued because it has a new project description. It's now no longer a permit extension. It's a license, a permit, or to go to license on that thing. The sphere of influence associated with that is, is a blip on the radar when it comes to the, what the EIR is truly for. The, the EIR is truly for going to license for the water rights and extension of the other permit is what it's for. The other big thing is the place of use issue on that permit to expand our place of use to allow us to transfer water to our local neighbors in case of emergency or for business purposes. So that's, that's the main crux of the, the EIR. The reason why the EIR cost hasn't come back to you is because we don't know what those costs are yet. So we're, we're using de novo to look at the current state of the EIR, basically feeling out the agencies out there to see if there's going to be a necessary need for more studies. And if there is, then he's going to bring that change order back to the board at that time. At that time, we'll have public comment on the EIR and about it. She can make those comments public too at that point. So just kind of want to give you...
I, I kind of think we all pretty thoroughly understood. And when Robin called me and talked to me at length about it, I explained it to her pretty much exactly the way you just did, but...
Okay. Good. Excellent. Then we're all on the same page. That's great. The North Bank Boat Launch and Land Acquisition. Emily, myself, and Neil finally were able to schedule an appointment down at the county about this to go over our solution to this problem. And to come to find out, we don't have a problem. We are exempt from the MAP Act. That our land, three-acre parcel is, is fine. That they will not, it's a certificate of, what is it, compliance, because it doesn't comply, but we don't need to comply. The only issue, and this is the only caveat, is that if we were ever, ever to sell that piece of our property to a, another individual, then it wouldn't comply. And that would be just basically on our title report that it says, this is not a, a compliance piece of property. But from getting building permits to getting any type of restrictions, we have no restrictions on that piece. So at this point, we're even and good to go.
So we don't need to buy that additional property?
Do we have that in writing?
Yeah. That's what I was just going to say. Do you have like a letter of understanding?
Why buy it then? We don't need it.
County isn't...
Were we told that once before in all this history?
Well...
And then they said no?
Yes and no. I think that there was some...
Misunderstanding.
Miscommunication and misunderstanding. And, I mean, they said they wouldn't issue a certificate of compliance. And I think that was interpreted by folks to mean that the parcel was out of compliance. But what they were saying was, you don't have to comply with this. So why would we tell you that you're complying with it? So is it in writing, no? Am I 100% comfortable? No.
But if they've verbalized that, please ask them.
Yeah, we can. I don't think that we're going to have to...
They don't need to say that we're in compliance. We just need to say that...
That it doesn't need to be in compliance. And why? Because if that's part of the official record, then we're clear.
Exempt from the MAP Act.
Did they reference where it stated that we were exempt?
The MAP Act.
Yeah. And that was how the conversation, they, they referred to the MAP Act. They provided us with the code sections. And that's how this whole thing started.
So, so we have what we need basically there then?
It wouldn't hurt to just send a letter summarizing our understanding of the meeting and give them the opportunity.
So we have something.
Yes.
And I don't think they're going to have an issue with that.
I know. They were very cooperative and very friendly and...
Good.
I've dealt with the county for 45 years. They're terrible to deal with. You've got to get it in writing. You have to get in writing. You know, but the reverse way. It works too.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we going to inform SPI about this now? So they're waiting for us to come back to some sort of negotiations?
Well, we'll inform them.
Thank you.
They'll probably just say, we'll make a boundary line modification. Give it to you. We didn't want it anyway.
That'd be wonderful. Okay, great. Good news.
Yeah, that was neat when I read that. I thought, yay.
Process water recycle, we're, they're still working on their memo to go to, they're, they're creating a memo and you guys can jump in anytime, to, to meet with the regional board to go over their findings, their preliminary findings of a dilution and dilution credits and for, for both of the constituents. I don't know if they have, do they have a date that they're going to meet with at this point?
No, we meet next week, next Thursday with consultants. And we will figure that out on our, on an action plan that's going to reach the board next week.
Will we get a copy of their findings before it's presented to the board or...
Yeah, we can forward the findings on, or at least their memo. Once we meet with, we're meeting with Larry Walker next week. Yeah, next Thursday. Yeah. So once they present their updated memo, we'll forward that onto the board.
Thank you.
Yep.
What happened to the $30,000 fine? Is it going away or is it still sitting out there?
I just got an email actually that there was a mix-up in one of the forms we sent over. So I just got to correct the form and send it back over. So I, I believe that that will be...
Waived.
18.
18, yeah. I, we sent the 30, but we, it is 18, yeah. We sent, we sent the wrong form. But we'll, we'll forward over the, the form to them probably tomorrow. And then it should be cleared up. It doesn't look like this should be...
Cleared up mean the fine will go away or...
It's applied, yeah. We have, our, our dollars that we spent to, to work on the issue will be applied to the fine.
Thank you.
Reservoir, Reservoir B project. Again, we actually double-dipped down at the county. So we, once we were done with the SPI property, we moved over to Skyway. And we discussed with them the right-of-way issues that we're having. And they understand our issues. We just reached back out to them. And I guess there's, they're having the same issue down in Chico with the same type of railroad easement ownership issue down there too. Hoping to get word back from them soon on a contact over there at the Union Pacific so that we can start working through, maybe getting a contact to get a sign-off. We've also found other issues with the, with the map that there's certain sections of our pipeline that are kind of in no man's land. We have no idea who rightful owner of those are. We talked to the county down there and they agreed with us because they had a road that went kind of across that way originally. That was county road that kind of intersected the railroad. And so there's some kind of, this would be a triangle there that we have no idea who the owner is. But we are kind of doing a...
I forgot to tell you. Yeah, I am. I forgot to tell you. That was mine.
She'll, she'll sell it to PID for 20,000.
Kind of doing a perpendicular kind of thing here though, because we're, we're working not only with town to maybe get easements, but we're also kind of getting legal started on a condemnation kind of roadway so that if we get to the point where we're just not getting anywhere, that we're, this isn't going to hold up the project timeline. Because this project has certain timelines that need to be met for this project to get done. So we have legal looking at that.
How, how far up the road from the turnoff to the old section of Magalia heading north is that dispute?
From, from, as soon as we get out of town limits, right?
Right.
Yep. As soon as you get out of the town limits, that's where the...
Right at, right at Pence. Right at Pence and, Pence and Skyway. Is that what you mean?
Right there. Well, it's...
That's where it starts.
Well, it's kind of ironic because as a kid, a family friend of ours in Hayward, their next-door neighbor bought one of those chillets up there before that road was there. And they owned all that property on the backside. It would be funny as hell if it was...
There's sand still?
Yeah. Because it was like about the third chillet on the old road on the side that would be for the railroad tracks. It was a summer house that they bought.
That's funny.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have issues all the way from there up to, up to the depot. The depot then owns some of the roadway and down the hillside according to something. And then we make the turn into our treatment plant. And that's where kind of the triangle starts where we have no idea. And we go down the road and we think that's county or we don't know that's county. Now that's where the triangle is.
Actually, once we get onto Pine Eagle, there's, there's the undefined part. And then as we go north from there, we actually get onto PID property.
That's right.
That's the part we got.
Interesting.
There's another potential solution. Run your 16-inch line parallel to the existing line where it will feed gravity. We won't need a pump station. And also, the road easement there is 50 feet wide, which we already have. So you'd save quite a bit of money on the construction, everything else. And with Tom's maps available, you can look for fault lines to see about the potential of the, of damage to that pipeline. There has been no problem there. And the fault lines that we did look at years ago with Tom's help were two, three million years old. They were dormant. So the other question I had, it goes with it. Have we ever tested that existing 41-inch line for leaks? We have the equipment to do it now and to see what condition it's in actually, or the right-of-way. And I understand the right-of-way needs maintenance work done to it. It's not all been cleared around it. I guess it goes down to a single road, dirt road route. But there's another alternative we're not looking at at all that would get rid of having a pump station, having to pump it 120 feet up in the air is what we're pumping it out of the water treatment plant to get it to flow gravity down the other side. And so there'd be no pumping station. It would feed by gravity like the existing pipeline does. It's 50 feet wide. Certainly there must be room to put two pipelines in there. That's my comment.
Bill, I, I talked to Keith O'Brien about a week ago on the very topic of the inspection of that existing 42-inch. He said it was inspected in the mid-'90s. He didn't have the, we were just talking off the cuff. But maybe Neil has, has a better idea. But in the mid-'90s, it was inspected, thoroughly inspected.
Inspected and relined.
And it was relined. Yeah, it was relined. So 20 years ago, approximately.
Well, it should be in good shape.
It should be in good shape.
So that's where we're at with that spillway investigation. Neil has gotten the draft of the Phase One Assessment Report. And he's given back comments on, on that Phase One. So that's not ready for, for, to present to the board yet.
We're past our March 19th deadline and we haven't submitted it.
They've submitted the draft and we're getting back. So the, the... So the final draft, or the final product is not available because we're giving comments back on their original draft. The March 19 deadline was our imposed deadline on them for us to get them back, for them to get us a final draft back.
The draft? Okay.
And then we've discussed based on, well, we'll discuss that further once we get the Phase One Assessment Report. We'll have a full board discussion on that to see whether we can get on a Phase Two type of project. The Myasen Canal, the original date was, we canceled due to weather, and they just got dates back to us, which I sent out, I think, today for April 2nd, I believe.
Do you have a time on that though?
Normally, I think last time they had a 7:30 a.m. start point, 7:30 a.m.
7:30. Wasn't that you two?
Yeah. Yeah, that's your ad hoc committee on the Myasen. 7:30, and how long was it going to last?
Till 4:30 in the afternoon.
You got a lot to look at.
Well, if it rains, what are we gonna do again? Cancel?
Postpone it again.
It just matters how heavy it rains. That was a dozer.
It didn't rain on the one. They canceled. That was what was sort of funny. Of course, you have to have a sense of humor dealing with the weather.
So we're hoping to get that one in, and then we'll move forward with that. On that side too, Paula Wayland is looking at the water rights associated with that project also to give us a report back on the water rights associated with that project so that the board's fully informed on the water rights and how they're being used and what they can be used for to assess kind of an initial value to that. You have the district manager recruitment on the agenda tonight, the retirement plan. We are fully over to ICMA as of last week, so all funds have been transferred. Everybody has met with an advisor, and all funds are invested with ICMA. So we have no more funds with FDJ today.
Information only, okay. Number seven, Trezor's, oh, I'm sorry. Open it to the public. Anybody have any comments from the public? If you wish, please come forward. I would assume this is in regards to what we're dealing with. Yes.
Regards to the PG&E situation, and I had a question asked to-
If you could give us your name, it would be appreciated.
Silva, and we're involved with the Upper Centerville Canal. And I have a question who the interested other partners might be. And the project being that they'd probably be involved with the Saba part of it.
I don't think-
Just before we answer your question, we signed a confidentiality agreement with PG&E on that to make sure that there was, that the information between the negotiations on either one of the projects was held in confidentiality. So I just want to kind of remind the board before they answer your question.
Right. We're just still talking about it. We don't have much information. We're still, pretty much what the board is doing is we have asked our legal counsel to continue to keep us in the loop, and that's approximately where we are. We're just-
We would just like to be able to have a hearing about it once it's-
Oh, I can pretty much promise you before the board makes any significant decision at all, there will be a lot of discussion.
There'll be a lot of public-
Lot of discussion.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But keep in touch. Check with PID on the agenda as to when it might be coming forward, so.
Okay.
We're very much in the preliminary stages. Does that require legal counsel? Yes? Thank you for coming. All right. Seems nobody, oops.
I'm just looking at the letter. It's a little hard to read up there. Is this project concerning the area right at the end of Paradise with a water treatment plant? You're talking about the depot. You're talking about the roadway and easements and rights. That's a, that's a peculiar district problem because when they built the Skyway up there, that was the old railroad track. And it's typical of all the surveys that they did in the past, they didn't do a very good job.
Had pretty sloppy work, huh?
Yeah, it was pretty sloppy. So if you have, if you have, and even a town, if they've got an issue with a town with the road going up there, they just built the road and they didn't care where it was. It was, oh, there's a nice place. Yeah, but it's on somebody else's property, and I don't think that issue's ever been resolved. So, and I'm looking at the Myasen Canal up here. That's another, that's one of the canals. That thing has been changed over the years because Eugene de Saba, when he was up here in the 1880s, 1890s, well, all these canals were all started, it started in 1854.
For gold, yeah.
Well, it was started up, dealt for miners' waters.
That's what I mean, for panning, et cetera.
And the first one was a Dewey ditch, and it came down the ridge, and they dumped it into one creek and then out of the creek, and then built a flume that we built for mining helltown. Now, that's the main one that we're concerned with. The second, the other ditches, the Hendricks, the Hendricks came much later. And there's two main ditches that are coming down, and they were rebuilt, abandoned and everything when they built the powerhouses. And so it's a very interesting thing to find out who's got water rights. And I know the attorneys have been working on this probably for 100 years on the water rights, and who's got the water rights. My concern is for the fire protection. And up on the upper ridge, we were trying to form an organization up there for a fire-wish community, but find out exactly all the people who's concerned and who has water rights. And, you know, maybe you have that already, but at least we're working on it as a Beaufort County Fire Safety Council.
I have a question for you. Do any of your maps show ownership of any of the properties that are in question around the water treatment plant?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the maps, well, I've taken the sectional maps. And you take the sectional maps, and you blow them up, and then you can get the county maps showing the private ownership of the property owners. You can get them from Beaufort County. And it shows, but there's a lot of things that are just, you know, it's not accurate. Especially down on Cudelink Road, all that area there. I know LNL surveyed it about five years ago, and I was working at Whiskey Flats, and they had to run a survey all the way from Cudelink all the way down to Whiskey Flats. That's quite a bit of work because that old railroad right-of-way was just, they just went and built it. They didn't care who-
That's the way they did roads around here. Wayland Road, I have 20 acres and a half, a little under a half acre on the other side of Wayland Road.
Yeah.
They just didn't want to make it that sharp, I guess.
They weren't accurate, and the surveyors, well, they had a problem. I mean, because you have to survey from a known point, and it's pretty hard to come from a known point. And so now with GPS, we're dead accurate, but we've got to go back and correct everything. And so I can see what your problem is. I hope I can further some information on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. All right. Motion, please, on Trezor's memo.
Have we looked at Trezor's memo?
Let me, I'll give you-
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that you were done. That's right. There's still one item to go, isn't there?
Our reserves actually keep going up, which is good. 1.75 million of unrestricted reserves. Our debt's almost, for the year, paid for our annual debt service operational-wise.
There we are.
We're right on budget, revenue and expenses, which is really nice. Just some highlights, you know, we refinanced 2009 COPs. One thing is, we issued an RFP for auditing services. That'll be on next month's agenda.
Okay.
So we're getting reports, our proposals back. I sent it out to about 15 audit firms. So we'll see where that goes. One thing I did miss on my, it really doesn't matter which report it's on, but I did attend the legislative symposium for Aqua on the 14th down in Sacramento. One of the big bills that is out there is SB 623. It's the water tax bill. Aqua is opposing it. It's become a budget trailer bill. The governor is becoming attached to this. There is a lot of favor for it in the Senate for it to go through.
Greedy Democrats, would you expect anything else?
It will require the district to do a lot of administrative work to put it into effect the way it's being written. There will be a tax on each individual account. But each individual count, if you're under the 200% of the poverty line, then you won't be taxed. So that means we're gonna have to go through and do kind of a census or-
Yeah, brother.
Report on who makes what, and then there's also setting up the counties up where to collect it and then to also, to remit it back to the state. The state then would be taking those funds and helping disadvantaged communities trying to get clean water. There is a problem. I mean-
Don't waste it.
There was, the writer of it is moaning, Senator from Carmel. He did, he brought up issues that there is a lot of communities out there that don't have safe drinking water. So there is an issue that needs to be fixed. He's looking at it to be fixed on the back of the water community. There is a tax already placed on fertilizers because of the nitrate issue out there that they're blaming the farmers for overnight, for over-fertilizing and poisoning the groundwater in a lot of communities. So they've taxed the farming community. They're gonna pay for 30% of it, and the water community's looking to pay for 70% of it.
It's the reason they want to surcharge on us people who are more fortunate. What did we do?
Yeah, it's just like, for me, it's redistribution. Yeah, they're penalizing water-
100%.
Efficiently and well-run water companies, districts, what have you, to pay for the ones that aren't.
Someday, it'll get down to where there's nobody left in California except the politicians in Sacramento.
Well, the one thing that we'll look into going forward is not only imposing it as a district, but maybe making our customers aware of it in a newsletter to allow them to maybe call there.
We have to be careful about that.
But we, we'll have legal make sure that we're careful.
There you go.
But just an informational line.
They can do it all day and all night.
So we'll be looking further into that, but it was, it was an interesting topic.
I don't know if it's appropriate to bring this up now or when Emily has her say, but, so tell me if you want me to put it off. But I'm concerned about the attempted passage without voters on these restrictions on water uses and the webpage that was set up to anonymously turn in your neighbor for sprinkling the roadway or washing your car without a garden hose shut off now, and the fines associated with it. And apparently, the only reason it wasn't passed was because every water district objected to it. And I'm curious, I don't recall, I mean, I recall reading it and mentioning about it at the last board meeting, but I don't recall seeing anything that we formally were involved in protesting that as a water district and keeping them from passing that. Are you familiar with that, Emily?
I don't, I don't recall anything short of whatever Aqua's doing.
So the state, the governor wanted to pass legislation, and I think it was a Senate bill, without any votes, was just going to be passed, that permanent conservation-
Are you, you're talking about extending the drought restrictions, making them permanent?
Making them permanent, and part of that were things like, there is currently a webpage. Anybody can log on to it at the state. It's a government webpage, California. And you can anonymously turn in your neighbor if you see that their sprinkler on their lawn happens to sprinkle water when it stops and goes the other way out onto the roadway or a sidewalk. You can turn them in.
Any form of waste.
And they have to be notified, and if they're turned in the second time, it's a mandatory fine. It's for that, for watering your lawn or any landscaping within 48 hours of what they call a significant rainfall. And also, if your neighbor sees you washing your car or your sidewalks, and if you're washing your car, you don't have a shut-off on the end of your hose, they can turn you in for that. I don't know how you enforce that, but it looks to me like-
The regulations as written and as proposed to be extended, the enforcement mechanism wasn't there.
But they were ready to pass it until the water districts complained. And what the last thing I heard about it was, they held off. So I'm wondering, what are we doing going forward to keep the pressure on them that this is a stupid thing to do?
I believe our office sent a letter in response to the comment period on the extension of those regulations. Didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know about the website. I'll look into that and see if I can get more information.
There's a number or a website, and you don't have to say who you are. You can turn in anybody that you think is violating those regulations.
I'll look into it.
Reading that too.
Yeah. It's ridiculous.
I would, there just seems to be more and more bills coming out of California that's gonna affect us.
And I mean, my point is, where does it stop? And they're gonna keep doing this, and it's at the point of ridiculousness now.
So I, actually, if anybody has time and wants to be more involved, there is a lot of board members that do go to these legislative symposiums. We are kind of on the pulse of it. It does get you some time to be able to go talk to your representatives down there. I do think it's well worth the while of the district because it does seem like there's more and more. And unless you're not at the table, you know, you know the rest of the story, so.
Going back to 623 before you leave it, did they talk about needing 2/3 of the vote because it was a new tax?
They did talk that it would go to the voter.
To both, to both houses.
Right now, they don't have 2/3, do they?
Well, they typically don't when it comes to budget issues.
I don't think in the House, unless your public can just come up with-
If it's a budget trailer now, I think, they would need 2/3 of the vote from both the Senate and the House.
I don't know.
I don't know how they're projecting the likelihood of that. I'm back on the tax now.
Yeah.
They sent out a poll, and 77% of their poll polling said that they were against it.
Well, that's good news.
That's good.
And that was just a recent poll by Aqua.
Probably won't change politicians in Sacramento's mind. It could be 98%, they wouldn't hear.
Groundswell coming through it, so we'll see where that probably ends up. But again, I think that it's important that the district is knowing these, being aware of what's coming out of California and out of the feds to see if we can make change or be part of the change.
Well, part of those, you know, those proposed bond issues, they speak to funding for disadvantaged communities and water systems. So there's money that's gonna be coming down the pipe already if those bond measures pass, which they probably will. I mean, I hate to say that, but I mean, probably will, just because-
In California, pretty much all bonds pass.
Yeah, pretty much to get passed.
They just figure out it's government pays it.
Yeah. So, you know, there's already money that's probably coming, so to have the tax on top of the money out of a huge bond, a couple of huge bond measures is redundant.
That's the argument from Aqua is they're saying that this shouldn't be just placed on water users. It should be placed on, if it's a state problem, and that's how the state fixes it. And that there should be a general fund problem, not a water user problem.
And maybe we can point out, like what we do here, oh, excuse me, Bill, is we have our own little program for, you know, to help, you know, lower-income folks that might be having trouble.
Well, we kind of do already. It's not much, but it's a little-
It's not much, but it is something, so.
The history of a lot of this stuff is it makes good newspaper copy or whatever, TV. And then when the details start coming out and they start figuring out how to put it in place and where does it go, often these things fail in the committee, and you don't hear anything more about it, which I think is what's happened, what you're concerned with.
I hope you're right.
And then the other part of it is, like you're coming up on elections this fall. But maybe the best example I can give you is that we got money, we thought we had money- there are two storage reservoirs in the state, one being oversized and everything else. But the one meeting I went with, with Doug Fleischer in Chico, we discovered there is a, two Republican representatives from this area got up and talked, is that the money wasn't secure at that time because half of the money had to go to environmental issues with these storage reservoirs.
Yep.
So now the way the reservoir sites may be built is without any government money, but with the districts in Southern California contributing to the site's reservoir. And, and so you just, it, you know,
Which is, no, which is, I hear it saying, which is exactly right, because now if those don't qualify, the voters have already voted it in, they've, they've paid the taxes and now that slush fund is available for the twin tunnels because that does, according to the environmentalists, improve the ecology at the delta, so it would qualify, so they can use our reservoir money to build their tunnels.
No, I don't think it will work that way. I don't know what they're gonna do, but
Mark my words, they're gonna get into it.
Well, they'll attempt, I'm sure.
Yep.
It's politics, so it's just government work. You have to sit, sit there. And I think what Kevin's saying is right. Committee meetings with the, the legislated bodies are open to the public in most cases. So if you know of a committee meeting that's taking place concerning this kind of stuff, maybe we can, through Aqua, we'll represent us, but if the board is excited enough about something, we could send somebody down to represent
If we go there, are we going there as private citizens or as representatives of PID?
Representatives of PID.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, you carry a little more weight if you can say I'm from
So, and, uh, just
If, if you know of anything that relates to the two issues that you've heard me speak about that or this mandatory restrictions being permanent, I'd love to voice my opinion on either one of those.
I want
And kind of semi-along that same government line, I'm, I try to talk to Gallagher and Nielsen in regards to whatever has to be done to the spillways and dams too, the same thing. Why should we in Paradise who happen to be unfortunate enough to have two spillways and two dams be having to pay fifty million dollars or who knows what it might cost when it's, it's the state that's mandating it? If you mandate it, then you need it. Everybody in California needs to be paying for it, so. Good luck with that one.
Yep.
That's, that's it for my, uh,
Okay, I jumped the gun before anybody can, no, nothing out there? Okay, number seven.
I move that we approve the, accept the treasurer's memo.
Second that.
It's been moved, seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number eight, approval of checks. Approval of the general check fund numbers fifty-one, five seventy-seven through fifty-one, six seventy-two for the month of February twenty eighteen? Yes, uh, I'm just reading it so you don't have to do it again. Twenty eighteen totaling three eighty-four, nine eighty-eight, fifty-nine exclusive avoided checks, numbers five one six oh two and five one six two four, five one six five three, five one six five five, and authorization of a similar amount allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of March. Okay, any que, do you have any proof, any comments or just questions?
Some questions. On page fifty-five.
Yeah, I think we all do.
Yeah. On page fifty-five, um, check number fifty-one, or five one five nine eight to pinpoint products for twenty-one thousand, seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Didn't we approve that check last month? Check five one five five seven on one twenty-six eighteen for twenty-one thousand, seven dollars and thirty-eight cents?
To pinpoint?
Good, good job.
Cause I know it's for leak detection, cause we all asked what that company was and we had approved like thirty thousand in the budget for that. But I see two checks issued for exactly the same amount, different check numbers, different
You know, we had to avoid that check.
Oh, okay.
We had to reissue it because they had the wrong address on there.
Okay.
Avoided it, we reissued it and then, um, and then the guy actually was onsite, so we just actually handed it to him.
Forty-four cent stay. Good job, man, I never would've caught that.
And so does the void show up on this somewhere?
It should show up in this, but because it was last month's check, it voids it in the prior month.
Okay, okay. And let's see what else I had. I mean, I think I looked up everything else. Yeah, that was it for me.
Bill, we wanna start with you down there?
Okay, uh, on page fifty-five, uh, Gintera Consultants, uh, what are they working on? Is that the spillways or, okay. And then, geez, I marked it here. There's, um, two checks for the, um, what do we call them?
Fireflies.
Fireflies. Yeah, there are. Page sixty-six, Venner Center, uh, three hundred meters or three hundred fireflies on February the sixteenth and February the ninth. And we're saying we've spent it on the previous questions I had, you said we spent twenty-some thousand, these are forty-two thousand dollars total.
Yeah.
In February.
Those go into inventory, so we have them on the shelf.
So that's for inventory and we used up two hundred of them already? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Dave?
That's all I have.
On, uh, page sixty, uh, zinc orthophosphate, and we have Jim in the audience here, so Jim, I just wanted to ask you, how is that Charis product working? Are you still going out and getting bids on that or?
The last thing you just said, bids?
Well, I, I'm curious about that Charis product, how's it been performing? And, and I'm curious if we're still getting, uh, bids on the zinc orthophosphate going forward or?
Well, we're still working with that particular project analyzing it.
Okay.
We're doing residuals in the distribution system, we're setting up, we have yet to set up the linear polarization equipment that we bought. And, and because, and our coupon testing has been delayed because of our transition of the personnel in our water treatment, so our corrosion control program is, is still in place. It's just taking a while to get it back up and running, so we're all still evaluating it. We are at point eight. We, we were at one, uh, part per million and we're at point eight now.
Okay.
We wanna continue to evaluate that. Actually, just yesterday, we were talking about getting out and getting the residuals done. So getting that long spreadsheet of how we've been tracking the trending of the residuals, we're gonna be updating that pretty darn soon.
How, how many points are you sampling now?
I'm guessing it's at least about fifteen or so and then around there and I think we might've reduced it to about ten. I don't, I, not, not exact, but that, that approximate amount.
A pretty good spread on the whole distribution
Yes, yes, it's representative of, each zone is represented.
Okay, and you have corrosion coupons at each one of those points?
Well, we, not yet, we, no, no, well, we have corrosion coupons throughout the system, but mostly at the tanks.
Okay.
But we, and we're getting that program back up and running too. It's been delayed.
Okay, when, when do you think you'll have a good program in place with coupons sampling and actually pulling them and weighing them?
I'll just tell you two months.
Couple of months? Okay.
I wish it would be sooner.
Okay.
It's just taking
No problem. I'll look forward to the update on that though. I'll look, I'll look forward to the update.
Pretty important program.
Yes.
Appreciate your question.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I had a question on, um, okay, let's see. Minnens Nursery, that was the two thousand dollars, was that for the demonstration garden? Is that what that was for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The sodium hypochlorite, uh, from Olin, is that for a, is that a full load? What's the quantity on, on that? There's thirty-five hundred dollars there for
Yeah, we take full loads, our tanks are, that's forty-five, forty-seven hundred gallons is a full load in a truck. These are bulk load deliveries.
All right, so, so it's way under a dollar a gallon still? Good. Okay, cause, cause chlorine has gone up.
Yes, it is, yes.
Chlorine has gone up considerably in the, so if they're holding, is that the same price you paid last time? Or did they bump it up?
Bumped up.
That's what I thought. How much did it bump up, do you remember?
I'm gonna say it's eighty cents a gallon now, which is still pretty reasonable.
That's real good.
Still competitive.
Yeah, that's real good. I can't even buy it like for that price.
The other, well, actually, matter of fact, the other bids, I think, when we rebid it, they were up over a dollar.
Yeah. Hoss is gonna be about a dollar ten, I think.
Yeah.
So, yep.
We don't wanna see it sneaking around a plant up there or anything.
No, I'm, I'm, uh, I, I see these prices all the time, so when I see this, I wanna make sure that was for a full tanker and if it is, that's a good price.
Bulk loads.
Okay, good.
How often do you take the bulk loads?
Well, it depends on the time of year really, you know, in the winter we use much less, in the summer we use a lot more, so it, it's, I think we, we buy about four to five loads a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds about right.
Thank you.
Then the leak noise correlator that we paid for, um,
Thirty thousand.
Does anybody know if we put that thing in use yet? I know we did the training and everything.
Yes, it has been used.
It's in use and how's it working?
It's found leaks.
Good? Yeah?
What do you mean?
Found leaks.
Actually pinpointed those leaks, as good as they said it was gonna?
I believe so. I haven't spoken with the people who were operating it, but they have used it successfully to find
So, so if I had a fifty-foot run and I said there was a leak in it, you could pinpoint it down to how close now? Based on your experience now?
I, I don't have
A foot or so, a couple of feet?
They, what they did was they put it, I think they put it on, what is it, Almond or Fur, Almond? And they left it, they came back and they were able to pinpoint within a couple of feet and then they were able to listen and then pinpoint it to that thing and they
Excellent. Where I'm leading with this is, is if we're gonna be fixing things on the other side of the meter, I don't wanna be digging up somebody's lawn three times to find a leak. If we say it's right there, I wanna make sure it's there, so that's good. I'm glad to hear that. Only have one other item and that was on page sixty-six. What is, uh, ten thousand, four eighteen thirty-eight for backwash waste in?
Water, Water Works Engineers, Water Works Engineers.
Uh, Water Works for the, oh, backwash, that's for, uh, I don't know why she listed as that, it's probably, it's for the
NPDs.
NPDs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So Larry Walker is their
Okay, all right.
They pay Water Works.
I just didn't recognize that and I was like, what did we spend that money for? So, okay, that was all I had.
Oh, I just, yeah, I just had one question about the Hunt Brothers. Is that who we file our gas
Fuel, yeah. Diesel and gas.
Yeah, where are they located?
Chico, aren't they?
Oh, we, Chico?
Hindensohn's?
Yeah.
I think they're in Chico.
That's my
So, would they, they'd bring it up their hall up here for us?
Yeah, they put it in our
Oh, okay, I see. I didn't know that. Okay. Buy and bolt. Okay, thank you, that's it.
I would assume that the die diesel doesn't have that twenty cent tax.
Yeah, we, we file a gas tax
Yeah.
On our undied. And so, yeah, we pay our gas tax and that stuff. So I think we get it and then, oh, no, uh,
No, they shouldn't, they shouldn't bill you
Undied, we don't get taxed.
No, you don't.
Undied, or the, uh, the died we don't get taxed, the undied we get taxed, but we actually get credit back for the stuff we don't use on road.
Oh, yeah, because a fair amount of it would be off-road.
Use a lot of diesel on road. Thank you.
Anything else? I just had one, well, I had three or four, but in regards to the FTJs on page sixty-one, you had said earlier that, that we're done, is, is that reflected here yet or is there gonna be more beyond this? I'm just anxious.
That should be done, I don't think, we didn't send them our retirement for this month. We just sent it for, we, we were still with them through the last month, so we sent them the retirement through last month. The cutoff was, I believe, at the end of, uh, at the end of February, our first payment to ICMA was the first week of March.
So, so in other words, this is it? That's the last check we should see to FDJ?
Yeah.
Good. All right, action please.
I move that we approve the check register. You read the whole thing, I don't think
As read.
You need to read it again.
Yep.
I'll second that.
It's been moved, seconded that we approve as read, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number nine, um, anybody wanna take any breaks or anything? You good?
No.
Would you like to take a moment? Okay. Okay, five-minute break.
Damn, he's serious.
Wow. I should've just, I should've just hollered, but I had people out there motioning for me to
Think it's raining. Always talk more once.
Yeah, is that so? I'd never heard that, Bill, that's cute. Legal report. Number nine.
Number nine. Um, we touched on a couple of, of items already. The one other thing I would update you on, if you recall, we have that Public Records Act litigation that's still kind of treading water out there. SWRCV had come back and said that a whole bunch of documents were exempt in their opinion, claiming attorney-client privilege and deliberative process and so on and so forth. There have been a few meet and confer efforts, our office and, uh, conference board, they've assigned it to a new judge because we can't do anything efficiently. And now it looks like there's another status conference set for April twentieth and the judge is gonna specifically look at whether, um, we need to designate a referee to, uh, review the documents and make a determination about whether they'll be disclosed. State has saw this on, I think, about thirteen documents that we're expecting to get. I don't believe we have them yet, but it is still plugging along, um, and hopefully we're getting toward the end of the, uh,
They redact them with like a, a twelve-inch ruler?
Pretty much, exactly. They just leave out the purpose of attorney-client privilege, yeah. Lots, lots of black ink on them. So, we're still working on it, um, and I hope after, and when's the board meeting next month? Is it after the twentieth? If it is, I should have an additional update for you next April eighteen. So we'll keep you posted on that.
All right, thank you. Number ten, nothing. Number eleven, a, Kevin and Neil.
Yeah, uh, if you remember, through the requirements of the dams, uh, the spillway investigation, uh, the other thing was a new inundation map was required to be updated, was it every ten years? And that was in, that was a part of the new water code. Our inundation map, I believe, we looked back, it was last updated in the seventies. And so based on that we have two dams, we have to have two inundation maps. If you remember correctly, the, we have an extremely high-hazard dam, which is Paradise, and we have a high-hazard dam, which is Galia. The extremely high-hazard dam had a deadline set for January first, two thousand and eighteen. And the high-hazard dam had a date set for January first, two thousand and nineteen. They didn't do a workshop on this till March of two thousand and eighteen to even tell you what you're supposed to do, so. That's beyond the scope.
Speaking of
Speaking of state.
So, what we did was, based on that there was a timeline, we needed to get this done, we went out for, Neil, prepared an RFP and sent it out to qualified firms, and got back the responses, and you have his memo with the, uh, summary of the responses and his recommendation on which firm to select, and I'll take it from there, if you have anything else to state.
Yeah, the work that's involved in this is probably pretty similar in the way it's proposed by the various firms, in terms of the analysis. The principal difference is in the mapping that they're proposing to use, and the quality of the mapping will definitely have an impact on the quality of the results of the analysis that they do. Uh, I'm looking at the table on the second page of the memo, you've probably seen that one of the proposers was a, financially it was a real outlier compared to the other two, so I can't see that anything special about their presentation that, that would suggest that we choose one that was substantially more expensive, but of the remaining two, the one that was a little bit more money, the, by DNA Associates, um, they proposed to do a much better quality mapping, which will support a much higher resolution analysis. Uh, the state regulations require using the best mapping available, uh, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to go out and map areas that haven't been mapped before, but providing a better quality base map will definitely satisfy that requirement better than to use one which has a fairly low resolution, which the, the second best, uh, or actually the lowest-cost one, their, uh, resolution is fairly low, probably. They haven't committed to a mapping product, but they're probably not gonna find a mapping product that's as good out of the, you know, off the shelf as what, uh, DNA is proposing to do with mapping that's available, and with supplementing that with some actual field survey.
Will it cost us a lot less if we can give them lousy maps? Never mind.
I doubt it.
I've got a couple of questions, Neil. One is, um, if we're looking at the timeframe there, 10 weeks, 26 weeks, and 16 to 20 weeks, is the time an indication of the amount of study and, and effort that's gonna go into the product?
I don't think so. I think the timeframe is more an indication of the, the level of work that these firms have in their office and how much they need to complete.
Especially with Brown's announcement. So it's a lead time and not a time that they're actually gonna have boots on the ground doing the work?
Yeah, 26 weeks, there's just no way that it can take that long to do that quantity of work.
Right.
But depending on what other work they have in the office that they need to complete, they, they need to try to, you know, juggle it all and try to fit it in.
Okay, and, and we've had experience with Gentera, uh, West Consultants versus this DNI, you said, or DN?
DN, I'm a chump.
Uh, have you, have we had experience with either one of them before my time?
We have not.
And, do we?
To the best of my knowledge, we've never used either.
Have we checked any references or talked to anybody who's used both of those firms to determine if?
Both firms, no, but I did talk to the references that DNA provided, and, uh, they were all complimentary. The other two proposers did not provide references, that was not a requirement of the, of the RFP.
But the DNA did provide?
They did.
References without being asked?
They provided references without that being a requirement, and I did check those references.
Okay, good. The only other question I have is, how did we determine, or how did the state determine that our Paradise dam was more of a hazard than our Earthen dam in Magaly reservoir? Was it because of the water level, or?
Yeah, it's, it's because of the volume of water involved, even though probably it's unlikely that Paradise is not a better dam structurally, it contains a lot more water.
Just because of the hazard of more volume?
Exactly.
Okay.
It would inundate a much larger area, causing more property damage and, and potentially, uh, risking more loss of life.
Okay, that makes sense, 'cause it didn't make sense to me that they would call that a higher hazard as more structure, because it's...
Built later, it should've been more sound.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not really based so much on the merits of the structure as it's based on what would happen if the structure fails.
That's good.
That's the presumption of any of these things, is that the structure has failed, so then they look at what's the impact of the failure.
Okay, thank you. How is Oroville rated? Super, extra, mega, extreme? We should ask this gentleman, I believe he was involved in the building of the Oroville Dam. Weren't you involved in the building of that Oroville Dam?
Uh, our company quit the case, and the main, uh, gate's all over, right, seven probably second fiscal, because there, there's both gates, the main gates and the spillway gates, the main gates down the middle of the dam, and they're, uh, those are mess, all smashed and instilled, you have 32 holes, and pretty much all of them.
See, it's not the gates that are the problem, it's the dam. So you didn't, you're not responsible for the spillway?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah. We did a drill with the Red Cross, and what would happen, Oroville Dam failure, it happened 10 years ago, we didn't drill, and it was, the drill was at Oroville Dam fails, what we're feeling, how much of the water will be, uh, how much damage, and that Sacramento to Concord, all that area, Cleveland to Concord, Cleveland to Far Side of Valley, all that that's under water.
Yeah, wouldn't doubt it. Super, mega, extra, super.
And, you know, phenomenal.
Yeah.
Just, you have, I don't know, a lot of the water, and just looking at where, where it will, the, the people in New Canyon would be kind of washed out.
Well, we, we would be in Paradise with lakefront property. That's it? All of our property values would go up?
The state proposes, proposes a home with requirements, and the, that, uh, upper dam was built, was re, rebuilt, I mean, well, it was here, I don't, I don't know the decade, 1950s or something?
That was...
Their, was it the Brazos dam, they built it, it's still?
Yeah, I, I was not here.
Yeah, but, uh, you know, and at that time, the guy, the engineers who, I think, I think they did a pretty good job, but, uh, you know, I don't go back and call, you know, this would be excessive.
Yeah.
So, ready for a motion?
Thanks, Neil, I think this looks good, the report looks good, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Okay. So, I'll come in.
I move to accept the proposal for professional engineering services from De Menicelli and Associates, Inc., for inundation mapping services for Paradise and Magaly reservoirs, for a not-to-exceed amount of $59,906, and direct the interim district manager to execute the professional services agreement, following review by legal counsel, or provide direction to staff for negotiating changes to the proposal.
I'll second that. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't think I was supposed to say that last part.
Thank you. No, you didn't need to say that last line, but that's okay.
Oops. You got my gist, though.
Just drop that last line, Georgiana.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, 11B, Kevin.
Yeah, this is a reimbursement resolution, uh, that is required for the, the package for construction funds for the V-Rats. Jim's been working hard on getting the, uh, state revolving fund loan package together to the, to the side of it, this is just a formality for reimbursement resolution for that, uh, for that, uh, loan. Just allows us that if we spend funds before the loan is actually approved, that we get reimbursed for those part of the loan.
Have these, are these numbers the same as what we discussed before, they haven't changed?
Hold on, I'm gonna look at the numbers.
Pretty sure they're the same. Have to get from 11 million to 12 million.
12 million, yeah, yeah. I mean, we're expecting 11, that's what we're expecting, but you always bump it up, based on those loan funds, so just because you stay under it, you don't wanna go over it, you don't wanna, you don't wanna underestimate your number and then have to go back and re...
plead for more.
A resolution, you always give it a little bit of a bump on your resolution, just in case numbers do go up a little bit, so 12 is, is a conservative number, we're hoping that it's less than that.
So the people who are getting that money, they're not seeing that we're bumping it up so they can ask for a little more?
Yeah, that's, that's just how, uh, anytime you do like, even like, uh, if you were to go out for a bond issuance, and you were going out for like, let's say, a $5.2 million project, you would issue your reimbursement resolution at six, just so that there's a little contingency there in case things do go a little anywhere.
Makes sense. Any further questions?
I'll vote against it, I won't say any reason to say anything.
Yeah.
Everybody knows where he stands.
We do, thank you, Bill. Any questions from public? Alright, bring it back to the board, and action please.
This is a roll call vote.
Yeah, but we have to have a motion in a second.
I move to adopt the reimbursement resolution number 21801, required as part of the construction application for the state board's drinking water state revolving fund program for funding for the reservoir B replacement project.
Need a second? I can second it, sure. Uh, roll call vote, please, Georgiana.
Dr. Solak?
Aye.
Dr. Rice?
Aye.
Dr. Dickinson?
Yes.
Dr. Keller?
No.
President Hillman?
Aye. That's it. Okay, C, Kevin, talk to us about a lift.
Yep, so this, uh, was part of the budget process, they, uh, believe the treatment plan and the, uh, the, the yard were both wanting some type of man lift, boom lift, uh, all-terrain to be able to use on different areas throughout the district, and so, um, this is, they found one that they felt was adequate, and all that Jim talked about, I, uh, the uses, and, uh, if there's any questions, he can probably answer them.
This, this is the one that we're gonna be able to inspect the tanks better and clean them, and...
Any aerial, um, maintenance job we can reach now, it's a 40, 45-foot height, so much more safer, four-wheel drive, diesel-powered.
Tree work around, etc., etc.
Trees, lots of elevated work, you know, we, we don't...
Can we help?
Renting ones, not a good idea.
Jim, does it include a trailer, or do we have a trailer, the district got a trailer that we can transport to?
PID has all kinds of trailers.
Yeah, if it doesn't have a trailer, we have one.
We, yeah, we have trailers.
That this would, we could put, we could put it on one of our trailers and get out to job sites, okay.
Is there any storage facilities for this? I assume it has a lot of rubber parts on it, and hydraulic lines, and other things that deteriorate with UVE?
Um, I'm not sure what, it, I, I, my staff report mentions it'll be at the corp yard, I don't think it'll be stored indoors. Could be covered with a canvas tarp.
Tarp's for, right.
Yeah, throw a tarp over it, that's, that's what my stuff used to have.
Be prudent.
I appreciate that it was 21,5, 'cause we budgeted 30,000.
Yep. No more questions, anybody from, okay, uh, bring it back, motion please, somebody?
I move to authorize the procurement of a man lift from the rental guys at a cost amount to exceed $22,000, including the tax.
I'll second that.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 11D, Mickey is not here.
She should be coming down.
Got to leave her.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll bump, we'll bump to E and come, when she comes back in, we'll go back.
Okay, so this was actually a request of, uh, so Director Solak and, uh, I believe, who was the guy on?
Steve Rodewick.
That's right. Um, so we looked into it, and Aqua actually had a favorable, uh, uh, recommendation on both of these, it, they're, they're combining the two, so there's a, is it, Prop 68, and then there's a bond issuance in November, so Prop 68's in the June election, and then the, the water bond is in the, the November. There is a little bit of scuttlebutt right now because of the Prop 1 monies, and how the state has kind of looked at some of the projects that were brought forward, and basically poo-pooed everything that they decided that they were gonna bring forward, so what's happening with those projects is they're actually going back for re-review at this point, um, and so we're, uh, the water community's kind of, kind of waiting to see what they do with those new, with the renewal of those different things, because if you remember, I believe the Prop 1 was $5 billion, 4 billion was for, uh, was for storage, it was earmarked for storage.
You weren't here, we said no.
They do, they do, they, they have some type of handcuffs, a little bit of handcuffs to use it for the twin tunnels.
Yes.
Because there is earmarked for storage, but then they brought forward storage projects, and they basically gave them all failing grades, and so there's a little bit of a...
Corruption?
Unsettling within the water community that, and it comes to actually these Prop 68 and the water bond to say, well, are, do we want to favor more monies for water issues? They're not gonna do what we asked you to do with the first water issues. So, so being that's, being that said, that, you know, these would be beneficial to the water community and to the Parks and Rec and different things like that, you also don't wanna give the state more and more money just to basically sit on and do nothing with it, too, so, that's kind of the, the bank.
You really think they're sitting on it and doing?
Well, they're spending it.
They're spending it, yeah.
I'm sure there's admin monies that are being spent, but, uh, but, but there is a little bit of, I mean, and they are getting some pressure from the, from the Assembly and from the Senate to basically get off, get off their seat and start using these monies for projects that have been kind of tried and tested a little bit, so, um...
Because when that was passed by the voters, that, those little details were never disclosed. Oh, you think? Not to the general public, not to the people who voted on it.
Yep.
And I don't see any, any real benefit for PID and the, and Proposition 68, maybe some yes in the bond, but, and I, I'm inclined to not be in favor of this, 'cause they're connected together.
We are disadvantaged communities, so we do, we, we have a little bit of stake in the game on that, but it does seem like we're not as disadvantaged as a lot of other communities when it comes to water issues, uh, seems like we're, our water issues are actually pretty positive, where you have other disadvantaged communities that are in just terror, disarray, you know, that they cannot, they don't have water.
Either that or they have water, these treatment plans.
So, why haven't, why haven't we, as water districts, uh, gotten together and, and pushed, or tried to force the government, the state government, to allow us to distribute our water in a safe and equitable manner based on our demand and supply for our district? In other words, if we have 19,000 acre-feet flowing through here, and we only have 12,000 acre-feet of storage, okay, why is it okay that they can tell us how much we can use when it's all going to go downhill? I mean, you know, we're only one district, but why haven't all of the water districts got together and said, let us manage our own, uh, water according to our needs, we, we don't need you from out of the area telling us how to do that?
In reality, we don't own the water.
Yeah, it's all, it's...
We own rights to the water, but we don't actually own the water.
See, dude, like all those...
Semantics.
Get me if I'm wrong, but...
Well, in reality, we don't own any of the water. So, how far do you wanna take that one out?
Well, we own the dams, so, you know, all the assets we have in the district are physical access, but no, it doesn't matter whose district it is, that's just the basic part of it, that's why water's good for, you know, whiskey's good for drinking water, it's for finding use.
We'll never get any of those questions resolved, there's nothing we can do. But, you know, but it is frustrating when you, when you look at, when you become involved in the water distribution and, and you see what we're doing in California, I didn't wanna look at the other districts and other states, but in California alone, when we see that all the voting powers in Southern California, and all the benefits are concentrated down there, it's very frustrating, once you, you get onto it and you go, ah, I see what these guys are doing, and, and yet your hands are tied, you don't have the power to do much about it. Yeah, and common, common sense seldom reigns.
It's a very, very complicated system, that's for sure.
Well, it's not that complicated, it is just dishonest and corrupt. Corrupt.
When we were in the drought, and I went down south to look at what...
We're not naming names here.
Tell us what you really think, Cliff.
On the way down, I stayed in an overnight, uh, home for, you know, to take, have a place to rest, and the lady owned it, we got talking at breakfast, and she has an in-law that she doesn't particularly like, but any rate, he had 200 acres of amens, he had, because the district shut off the water, didn't have any more water, they pulled all the trees, and you took at the, look at the investment involved in it, if he didn't go bankrupt, he came awfully close, and that's the kind of sacrifice that went on during the drought in the San Joaquin Valley, depending on where you were, what the water district, water run. There were places in Southern California had a new development, and it turned out they didn't have any water rights, so they had to go to the nearest district and buy the minimum amount of water, whatever you wanna charge, so we're sitting pretty good with our water rights and with things we have here.
And that's why we live here. Yep.
Yes, in large part, but every time that you turn around, the people down there that are, look at our water up here and try to figure out a way to get it, and the only thing that's saving us is our water rights are protected by law.
You know, we're in the middle of our drought, we went to Southern California, and I stayed in a very posh hotel, which shall remain nameless, um, but they had a water feature with swans swimming in it, and a waterfall, and a creek that left, and while we were waiting for the chauffeur to bring the limo to take us to dinner in Hollywood, I asked one of the guys standing there, and I said, uh, how do you recirculate that? And he said, we don't, and I said, where does that water come from, is it a creek? He said, no, that's city water. I said, are you telling me that the waterfall comes out, fills the pond for those geese, and then goes down the storm drain? And he said, yep.
Hmm.
I told my wife, she was the one that told me, she said, we're in the middle of the drought, she said, I want you to soap up, shut off the shower, you know, while you soap up, and then turn on the shower and rinse. You know what I said after that? We have an instant duty hot water heater, it's a 20-minute shower. Well, but, but with that, but with that in mind, in my thinking, we need to be as
Well, but, but with that, but with that in mind, in my thinking, we need to be as proactive as possible and fight every time we can. And to me, this, even though it's a teeny thing, I think we should try to support it, but I don't know.
To each his own.
That should be our new mantra, it's our water, leave it alone.
At what point do we get to tell the state, if they get to wish, if they get to break any rules they want, when can we just tell them to stop it?
We make a caravan, we all take empty jugs down there and we fill them up at the fountain in front of the Capitol and we bring them back.
Well, maybe, maybe we wait on this resolution, just see how things shape up a little bit. The election's in June, we still got a little bit of time and.
I think that's probably a wise thing.
I mean, this is symbolic.
It's symbolic.
Yeah, that's it, that's all it is.
Table it, table it and then we'll.
Table the resolution.
Oh, I thought you were. There's a, there's a motion to table the resolution and there is now a second, so all those. Cliff, Cliff seconded it, I think.
I second.
Yes, right. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So it's a real call.
Oh, that is a real call. Oh, no, we're tabling it, we're tabling it. To table it, we don't need to, yeah, I don't have to sign anything.
Just put it off is all we do.
I think that was, any opposed? It was unanimous. Okay, back to Mickey.
Here we go.
Were you watching us, Mickey?
I was so involved in that conversation you were having about the boom truck that I lost track of it before the meeting.
It was the boom trucks.
You have in front of you a request to approve us to continue purchasing software subscriptions for YAD employees. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of history in the past. Well, when I first started here, especially, we would always, when, anytime there was an upgrade of software, we would come to the board and there would be a big, big dollar approval because it's a lot of money to upgrade everybody, you know, when a new version comes out. Currently, it's about twenty to thirty thousand dollars would be what we would be asking to upgrade. Software companies have found a new business model and they quite, I don't think that they're moving away. Adobe actually has made it really difficult to get any of their products, the old box version. Almost all their products are subscription-based now. So our choices there are either get the subscription model of Adobe software or use a different software. And so for the Adobe portion of this, I've tried lots of other PDF softwares over the years and there's always some sort of issue. And I would just like to be able to continue getting the Microsoft and Adobe software that the employees are used to using, can use well and are very productive with, just to be able to let them do their work with as least amount of bugs as possible.
I have a question. Adobe Acrobat DC, that's the online version, versus Adobe Acrobat Pro. Do they have an Adobe Acrobat Pro now that is annual license, it's online also, or is that?
Yes.
So the Pro is, is like the DC only with more functionality?
Correct. It might be called, it's possible I have the terms wrong on here, I believe it's called Adobe Acrobat DC Pro. Might be what it's called.
Because in an application I use, FileMaker Pro, the Adobe Acrobat will not work on the latest version of FileMaker Pro unless you install the DC reader as well. And for some reason, you make the default, the Adobe Acrobat Pro, the older version. But if you don't have the DC reader on there, it won't function properly.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, so you might look at that, I don't know if it's cheaper, if you're looking at Adobe Acrobat DC to maintain functionality, Adobe Acrobat Pro before they went DC is still very functional, I use it every day. As long as you have the free reader downloaded, the Adobe Pro works.
Some of the things that our staff use it for, that you need the fuller, the robust versions for are redactions and convert, other than just reading or annotations. Those you could do, you know, we could probably just about get any PDF program if all we need to do is annotations and reading, but the redactions and converting between Word and, it's sometimes a little bit. And then, you know, when we get work from Cedar Creek, a lot of the stuff that they get us, if we can convert it using this, we can reuse it. So we can grab the images and everything out of there and reuse them elsewhere, so it's been pretty helpful. So, you guys have any more questions?
I was interested, you had, to date, the district has more devices than employees?
Absolutely.
So devices being?
Well, you could have somebody who has a desktop, a laptop, a phone.
Oh, okay, including phones, okay.
And the, the office software you can have on a phone, you can have on an iPad.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Are you using Terminal Server?
Terminal Server?
Yeah.
You mean for?
Well, if you've got devices out in the field, are you logging on to Terminal Server and then?
Not Terminal Server, no. If we did do that, we would use Citrix and that's something that we're going to be bringing forward more because there's some new security elements that we really need to get implement before we go that route.
I am so un-techie that it's all Greek to me, so whatever y'all say.
And then I noticed on the, the motion that you're asking us for is kind of open-ended, it's, but we're not approving a specific amount of the eighteen hundred dollars, but it's.
It is, it is open-ended. Obviously, it would, we could close it up, you could change the motion to close it up a little bit. But I did the math and if we were, right now, it's about eighteen hundred dollars annually is what we're paying now. If we were to get every employee upgraded, and eventually we will under this plan, it's about sixty-five, sixty-six hundred a year. But it could take us a while to get there.
It's a big difference, good catch there, isn't it?
Yeah, and the reason why this is coming to you guys is because as other software, because the way the buying software is sticking in on your computer and then going to now the subscription-based software, is that it's going to be a kind of a evolution that as computers become replaced, they're going to become more of the subscription software. We just wanted to kind of be transparent to the board that says, here's what we're paying now and here's where we could go into the future based on, on the transition of different, of different.
If these are all online, if any of these are specific to need during an emergency and the internet's down, how are you going to access any of this?
They're not online. They are, you actually install them on your computer. The source software is online, so you can go download it anytime you want. So for instance, if we had a disaster here and we had to relocate somewhere else, we could download the software and still use it legally.
But, but I mean, like Adobe Acrobat DC, the actual app.
It's not online. You actually download it onto the device.
The hard drive.
But your subscription is through the online.
Your subscription is online and it's all.
So all you're talking about is electronically downloading your new application instead of getting CD?
Yes, but the big, the big change.
That's different than cloud-based, so these are not cloud-based?
They're not cloud-based.
Okay.
There are cloud, there are light cloud versions that we could use and we have the option of using, but.
That, that wasn't apparent, yeah, because cloud-based is a completely different animal, okay.
So the way, the way I look at this, Ann, is if we were to upgrade our users, they come out with new versions about every three years. It's about, I mean, if we, the difference between the one-time purchase, you can only use it, one user, one device, right? So, but the subscription-based, Microsoft, you can use on five devices. So you're going to save money when you have more devices than users. And if we're talking a max of six thousand a year compared to eighteen thousand dollar purchase every three years, it's almost the same, only we're not making any commitments. Because what I've done in the past couple of years is I've had certain versions, I've been able to downgrade. When employees leave, you can just stop the subscription, you're not paying that monthly. So it's, that's some of the good that they're offering with the new model.
But you're asking us to approve an open checkbook, but you're showing us a total of eighteen seventy-one and saying that throughout this period till when, you could purchase three times as much.
Yeah, we could, we could.
So.
So we could amend, we could change the motion so that there's a max of, that it doesn't go over a seven thousand dollar a year without coming back to the board?
So, so this is ongoing in perpetuity, you're asking us to approve this one time?
Basically, the reason I'm here is because we've been purchasing these for a few years and over the last three years, it's kind of grown from one or two subscriptions to twelve. And although we've not surpassed management approval levels, we will, when, if it continues. So Kevin wanted to make sure that we brought it here and got your guys' blessing and approval before we continued the practice.
And you've investigated all avenues of this thoroughly, you feel this is the best way to go?
I feel it's the easiest to manage and the best for the employees, yes. I'm not going to lie, there are other options, we could get Microsoft two thousand sixteen and we could make a dedication that we are only going to use that software for the next fifteen years. And, but I don't think it's a good model for getting the work done, you know, it causes problems down the line.
And as we get more subscriptions, is there any discount?
We already get a discount, I will tell you, just because we're government. Instead of the twelve dollars a month, we pay nine dollars a month per user. And then, and I review these all the time. So for instance, I had a Visio subscription and I had it for three years and then decided, you know what? I just don't think that I'm getting the monthly value out of it, so we were able to just end that. Same thing with some of the Adobes. The Photoshop, we had a B-free version, which was thirty, almost thirty dollars a month. We ended that and went down to the nineteen dollars a month. So we'll get the best subscription for the purpose, so.
Sounds like there's a little flexibility in subscription services.
Yes.
Well, you're going to stay updated, which, that's a good thing because when people change files and they use a later version than you, that causes grief, I get that. I'd like to see that it's an annual, I think, I think it doesn't hurt once a year to come and ask for
Okay.
the ability to, but, but I don't feel comfortable saying you have an open checkbook and it's to perpetuity and, and this is my best guesstimate, but it could be five times that much.
Well, why don't you consider putting a dollar amount, not to, to not exceed X amount?
Why don't you tell us what you'd be happy with for twelve months? And then, and then if it had to exceed that, you'd have to come back and ask us for more.
Do you do these year over year or do you do it budget year to budget year? How do you do it, calendar year or budget year?
I can do it any way you want.
Well, how would you like to do it?
Well, let's do it budget year.
Okay.
So how about, I just presented every budget year and you approve, and I'll give you the anticipated subscriptions for the next year.
Sounds good to me.
Is there a certain date that these subscriptions start on, is there a particular date that?
Because we're, we're mid-year now, so would any, an action now hurt that?
The, the Adobe subscriptions, I couldn't end those, right? There's like a penalty because you do have to, even though it's a subscription and you're paying month to month, it is an annual commitment. But the Microsoft is month to month. So if I, how, how do you want to say it right now?
I was trying to think of how you'd align, line all these subscriptions up for the budget year is what I'm thinking, so that's, yeah.
That's, that's, that's why we're kind of coming to you because they are all staggered based on how many you subscribe. So it kind of is easy to go, oh, one hundred and thirty here, one hundred and thirty here, one hundred and thirty, and by the end of the day, you're at, oh, wow, we're at twenty-five hundred.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's why we're kind of bringing this forward to say, hey, these are the, the potential expenses of these subscriptions.
I wonder if they give you a credit, though, you see, I'm saying if you inquired to the company and said, well, we want to line, I, I did this with some other things and I want to line everything up to July one, let's say, you know, for the year.
I don't know if there's any benefit to doing it that, that way, maybe with the Adobe. I know that right now for the Adobe subscriptions, once we go, because right now, we just have the personal versions. They actually charge more for the business versions, which I believe under the business version, you, we could talk to them about a cutoff date or a begin date. But it costs a few dollars more.
I'm a little confused, too, you said number of devices, five, and you said before it was device-dependent, not user-dependent. And you got number of subscriptions, twelve, but only five devices, is that, what am I missing there?
The way, okay, so let me, I'll just go back a little bit. With the full one-time purchase, you can use it on one machine.
Okay.
So let's say, you know, we bought Microsoft Office Suite, we paid four or five hundred dollars for it, we can use it on one machine.
Right.
So if we wanted to have it on all of our forty-five machines, we'd have to buy that four hundred times forty-five. The subscription costs nine dollars a month, so it's about, it's a hundred and eight dollars a year and you can use it on five devices per user, so.
Oh, per one of these twelve?
Per, per twelve.
Twelve times five is what you got there.
Yeah, but it doesn't exactly work that way, it's not like we can just use it on sixty devices.
Yeah, but, no, I understand that, no, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay, thank you.
Question for you, Kevin.
Yep.
What have you been budgeting for this? Because if this has been ongoing, is there a?
It's kind of a lump into office supplies, you know, with, with it being at that point, there's just, you know, we just kind of lump it into office supplies or subscriptions or anything like that. So there hasn't been kind of a specific hard budget for it.
So maybe, what?
Why don't we do that, then? Let's just say, budgeted item approximately seven thousand, not to exceed seven thousand a year.
No, no, I was going to even, I was going to make it even easier, okay? If, if these are, if these are monthly costs, why don't you just spell them out in, in the register so we can see what they are? And if one of them's out of line, we can question it, but it doesn't come to a point where you got to bring it to us for approval, it's an expense.
Any way you want to, oh, sure. And that's kind of the way that we've looked at it in the past, but.
It's like putting postage in your postage meter, you know?
Yeah.
It's approximately five hundred and eight, it's approximately five hundred and eighty dollars a month, so.
I, I mean, that seems like a reasonable, if it's, if it's costing doing business, not a capital expense, you know, why, why waste the board's time with it? If we see something that's out of line, just like anything else, we can say, hey, what was that about, you know?
Sure.
And otherwise, it's business as usual. And if, if it gets out of line and we question it, then you're going to have to come and say, well, yeah, we had to add thirty-six devices today, you know? You know, as the need arises, but why, why have to make a decision that caps it right now? If it's just ongoing expense?
Sure, we just wanted you to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
That works, a non-issue.
Works for me.
So, so what do we want to do with it?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, we didn't have to do anything.
Thank you for that information.
Seems like an easy solution.
Yeah, uh-huh.
These are, these are one of those costs that kind of creep up on you, we want to make sure you guys were understanding.
Aware, yeah.
Well, we get it.
Yep.
Okay, F, eleven F.
Cal Trust. This is an investment account, now that our, our reserves are growing, we're looking to kind of maybe get a little more long-term investments. This is kind of the baby step into the long-term investments from Leif. So you have Leif, which is very liquid, and then you have Cal Trust. Cal Trust actually was started to compete with Leif. And so a whole bunch of cities got together and created their own investment pool and it allowed them to kind of divvy up different investment pools. So they have a short-term, medium-term, long-term investment pool. They're extremely, everything's still backed by a hundred and ten percent of their value of the investment. They go by the California Investment Policy and the accounts, or the monies are still within, within three days, no matter what investment account you're in. But it does give you an additional option to invest into a higher-yielding investments.
Have we ever invested with them before?
No, this will be the first time.
I think if we, if we did do that, I think I would look at what our reserves are and make an investment that would not exceed the term of what our reserves would carry us.
Yeah.
That's what I would look at.
Yeah, we'll, we'll baby step into this, we'll keep most of our money liquid into Leif and then, and then we'll, we'll start putting a little bit of money into this Cal Trust to see if we can get a little more bump into, in their investment.
Looks like the rate of returns looks slightly better.
Looks like the rate of returns looks slightly better.
Slightly better.
Slightly.
They benchmarked themselves off of Leif, so they, I think they constantly are trying to beat them.
Is there a greater risk for greater return?
There's a little bit of a greater risk on the long-term side, that's why we wouldn't take a heavy, a heavy dip into that pool, so on the long-term side, you could see a little bit of a downturn, but for the short-term side, it's almost the exact same risk as Leif, which probably would never go below zero.
Is there any other entities that we know of that are invested in Cal Trust?
Buick County, I think Secret Chief goes in there, a lot of the major, major cities, the only one that's really not in there is the state of California, because they use their own, they use Lake, they use actually PMI.
They use our money.
They, they use, they use their own investment.
Just dip into our pockets whenever they want.
This is for the other cities and counties to, to invest, so there's, there's all the big name, the cities and counties in California investing.
Okay.
The town has been in Leif for a long time.
Yeah.
How much did you figure to put into, and open the investment account?
So there is no minimum, so I'd probably start with about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in there to start off of our one-point-seven.
And it says here, there, we can get them out, the money can come back as quickly as Leif.
Leif, yep, so if you go into longer, long-term, it's a three-day window, if you go into the short-term, it's same-day, same-day wire.
Years ago, I was on the cemetery, and we were using, like, and we looked into other investments, because the Cemetery District actually has quite a bit of money in reserve for the day that the cemetery is closed, and has to be maintained. And what we could find at that time is that Leif was conservative enough, and there, that wasn't too long after the Orange County piascos, and Leif was looking pretty good, so we stayed with Leif at that time. I didn't even know this thing existed, the Cal Trust thing.
It might not have existed at the time, this one came up when the state was going after Leif funds, they were going to raid the Leif funds and borrow them.
Oh, no.
And so that's where this Cal Trust really got its boost, everybody bailed out of Leif and went into Cal Trust.
Wow.
Leif turned out to be, it lasted, just, it was conservative enough that it didn't get washed out, so, anyway.
Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? Action, please.
I move to authorize the interim district manager to execute an agreement with Cal Trust to open an investment account.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. Ad hoc demonstration garden committee, probably you in. And Bill?
Well, no, on the twenty-third, I don't, was I there? Yeah, I was present, I missed one meeting, and then we had a meeting, just, what was it, last week?
Yeah, we had a meeting actually on the sixteenth, and the, those minutes aren't in any of this, this is the meeting from the twenty-third.
We, it wasn't a lot involved, and we have the meetings from February, and, and March's meeting was, it was raining outside, and we talked about signs and so forth. In fact, board brought a sample for us to see tonight of some signs we're talking about using on a board that goes in the garden, and we talked about that and what we have to do, and then at the end of the meeting, I mentioned we have a little landscaping outside here to do, it won't, it's not much of an effort, but to finish it up, and we talked about the possibility of, which will come to you at next board meeting, about hiring a landscaper, but that is the stuff that has to be designed for, and so we, we just talked a lot, because it was wet outside, and we said, next time we get a week of dry weather, we will plant, we'll call a special meeting, and we'll get out there and dig some holes.
I was just going to ask you, have we planted those plants we bought from?
No, there's, the way the frost has worked, Cliff, if they got damaged, they were still at the nursery.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
That's their, their problem.
So we, so we paid for it, it's still over there?
Yeah, they're still there.
Well, the weather didn't cooperate, we had that dry February, and then we just didn't work for us, and, and then the frost came along, and we were grateful that we didn't plant anything, so.
When you get a list, I want to go over an inventory, make sure they didn't sell any.
Oh, it doesn't matter, they'll buy more for us, they're a good firm, they stick to what they do.
I got a question, what are the signs going to look like?
We haven't totally decided yet, Ann can cover that, because she's been doing most of the work.
As far as the plants or the beds or the?
Is it something, while you say signs?
Many signs, many signs.
Many signs, right, or are they plastic covered, like signs when you take?
The signs actually in the beds are galvanized or aluminum with a stake.
Okay.
And then similar with, for, for each species, then there's also going to be a three-by-five sign, similar to what's outside the Leif office, and that's where there's going to be recognition for donors, some kind of signage there.
So we're going to have many, many signs?
Yeah, and then there's going to be an archway, this, this one is.
For each bush, I would imagine.
Yeah, this is the archway with the sign over the entrance, that the college is going to weld for us.
And we're, we're still taking donations in the home program, if anyone is interested.
So, yeah, those are the signs so far.
If, for some reason, Mike, vocal here, if for some reason Mike is not able to find somebody at the Paradise High School in regards to the bench?
Oh, yeah, that did come up.
I know a local contractor who's.
Well, Mike said he'd build it himself.
Yeah, Mike, yeah, Mike right now is going to build it.
He would do it himself, okay.
He was so frustrated, he said he'd do it himself.
Okay, because I know a guy that would be able to help him, that would do a good job, and would not charge anything, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
If we can get his name, we can pass it on to Mike.
Sure, if you want to ask me later.
Where we are now is Mike's going to build one out of trex deck type material, so.
I've got a whole bunch of treks at my house left over. Have them call me, too. Anything else? Oh, next committee, well, what were they here?
Community Relations.
Community Relations. Anything to report?
No, you do it, you're the chair.
Okay, yeah, we had a community relations meeting on March eighth, and it was great, we had some new members, Ward being one of them, and Chuck Bell was the other new member, so that was really great, appreciate it, Ward. So we talked about update, updating the plan on access to community knowledge and beliefs, and actually, I, I contacted the university for, for that, to see if we could get a survey, I did, she, the gal finally got back to me, so she's still working on, on it to see if there's some interest in providing us a free survey using student help to assess our.
That's the goal.
Yeah, our PR activities, and if the community is receiving those, those messages. Kids, update, let's see, Kids Fishing Day photo booth, Mickey, did you want to talk about that at all?
I want to share.
Oh, well.
I can talk about it, there's just, we're going to have a booth at Kids Fishing Day for the directors to meet and greet participants of the Kids Fishing Day, and then it's going to be a photo booth, so.
Yeah.
So that they can take a picture with their fish, or whatever they want, and that the director will be the one probably snapping the photo for them, so they'll have somebody there to take the picture with their phone, you know, they'll have a little background and stuff, so. It's just a way for the directors to get out and meet.
The two directors, Mark and I, showed up last year, and.
I won't be there, I know, I'm out of town.
No, 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 I wasn't there, but I have on my list here to ask, how do you sign up, because I do plan on attending, is there anything else I can do?
I think we were talking about having a schedule, and you, you pick your times, and then maybe plugging you in for this particular time.
I've got a quad, you need an extra quad, riding around back and forth, people, stuff or anything?
No, we have a quad.
Yeah, you got one, but I got one, too.
Not running around on a quad.
If the weather's good enough, we'll run the boat, we'll get, we'll get times out for.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I said I need you at the foot.
No, no, not me, you want somebody better looking.
So we're working on that, it should be a lot of fun.
Okay.
Should be a lot of fun, so we're hoping that, you know, we'd have some participation from the directors.
There are going to be more details next meeting about what time and where and who?
We'll get, we'll get a sign-up sheet out to you guys.
Yeah, you bet. PID demonstration garden, we talked about the brochure, and you can talk about that.
We just, a couple of the committee members and myself are going to work with Cedar Creek on the brochure for the garden.
Nice.
And then the plaque, we've actually basically got the approval of the language.
Finalized the language.
Yeah, update the, update on the new PID bill format, it looked really good, Laura Kapper came in and showed us that, we got a couple, a couple colors now, we're actually.
I said, we're styling.
We're styling, right, we've got, is more information than we've ever had on, on the bill, I think it's, it's going to look great.
Nice.
Yeah, very readable, too. Speakers Bureau, we were talking about organizing a speakers bureau, and it was decided that the, the managers would work that up for us, for them, and it was decided that probably be the employees and the managers giving the, giving these presentations if we were requested to do so. Let's see, PID Water Talk, we talked about highlighting employees in their activities in the Water Talk newsletter, and one of the examples is Greg Dobbs with Kids Fishing Day, and that's coming up, so, and I just thought about earlier tonight, with the Pete, I guess on the crew is training, has been training the guys on the driving tests, and that seems like kind of a topic that might be good as well, you know, so, so, that was it, that was the meeting, it was a good meeting, we're working, we're working hard to get our messages out, thank you, Mickey, too, for that.
Further questions, any comments from the public? Director's comments.
You forgot.
This last meeting.
I forgot about one.
Oh, BSC, yeah, I'm sorry.
BSC?
Well, it was, it wasn't a really in-depth meeting, but it was interesting, it was February twenty-third, we basically elected new officers, went over financial reports, had a little new business, we're changing the banks, going to Tri, Tri-County Bank, I guess Bank of the West was holding the funds before, but they decided to move to Tri-County, because they had offices in every, the major cities here in the county. One of the interesting things that came up was Lafco, Tom Lando discussed about how Lafco is pushing for consolidation of water in wastewater districts, you know, for efficiency purposes, so I thought that was very interesting. In fact, he gave an example, there's, I, I didn't have that note, I forgot to get that note, of which districts are actually planning the works to, to merge, so, how would we do that?
Well, actually, the town would love to own the water district.
Yeah.
I've heard that more than once.
Yeah.
And, and some water districts would, would love to own the sewer districts, so which side it would go on to, who knows?
Let the town own the sewer district, and our boundaries are not the same as the town's boundary.
Tell Mr. Lando, thank you, but no thank you.
Will do, and then let's see, we talked about the PERS retirement system, you know, rising costs in the PERS system, and it's, it's affecting the special districts that are, that are in the PERS system, so there, there's a lot of concern out there about the rising costs.
We are, we are so blessed, there, right there is one big reason not to join with the town on anything, we get into that PERS system, and there's so many, it's a disaster.
It's, it's a big concern, topic.
Yeah.
And let's see, oh, yeah, and we also talked about SB nine-twenty-nine, which I learned from Kevin, is similar to six-twenty-three, the water tax bill, I guess there's two different bills, but anyway, we, we're going to, we're going to invite Jim Gallagher to the next meeting, and just to discuss this issue with him directly, so that's, that's the proposal, and we think he's going to come, because we had a representative from his office at the meeting.
Just getting a time limit, he's a politician.
He's not as long-winded as some of them, not as long-winded as some.
And then there was a, a discussion about Oroville Dam Spillway Project, and how it's affecting special districts in the community of Oroville, so, was that?
Thank you.
Thank you, am I forgetting anything else now? If I remember.
Okay, thirteen, director's comments, Mark, you're still talking, keep talking?
Oh, my God, no, I really don't have any comments, but thanks, thanks to public for coming tonight, the members of the public, appreciate it, thank you.
No comments?
Energetic as always, good, good conversation, lots of things discussed and problem solved, good.
Some of my family members were asking me, how late will the meeting go tonight? And I said, we've been doing pretty good lately on time, see, it's only twenty after nine, and we've got some closed session items, but we're really doing very well, and I thank Dan for his leadership in getting this done.
Anybody could do it.
So I think I've been enjoying the meeting, and we seem to be getting along better than some nights, and tonight, so.
Well, it's a great community, we got a lot of good people, yeah, and I have no comments.
Then I guess we go to closed session.
Closed session, we'll see you all in a bit.